Good evening. Calling to order, the September 27th, 2016, regular meeting of the Corder Madera Planning Commission, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Metcalfe.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Caldera.
All right, with that said, it is the order of business next to open the meeting to public comment from anyone who wishes to comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda. So, if you would like to speak to something on your mind that we're not going to address later, please step up to the microphone and make an address. You have three minutes to do so. Of this group of five, I see none stepping up to the microphone to utilize a public comment. So with that said, we'll close the public comment section and go right to our new hearings. So, tonight we have two hearings. And one is 52 Summit Drive, one is 11 Madrono Avenue. Before turning it over to staff for presentation, I'm just going to take a quick poll of the other commissioners. Have you all been to these projects?
Yes.
Yes.
Nicholas?
Yes.
Okay, we have all been there, including myself. So we've all seen it. Some of us have seen both of these projects before us before. Myself and Phyllis have seen both of them, myself and Phyllis and Niccolo have seen one of them, I believe, so.
Correct.
Right, before us in the study or previous hearing. So with that said, Mr. Boyle, this is your item to present, 52 Summit Drive, a design review and variance application for a new 3,809 square foot two-story residence. The application include requests for side, rear, and lot coverage variances.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Chase, members of the planning commission. Is that working?
You are live.
I'm live, thank you. Yes, as you say, this is a project for 52 Summit Drive, a brand-new single-family home. They will be demolishing the existing home that many of you probably saw. It's currently there in quite poor condition. Before I begin, I do want to just point out two things on your places that I put in this evening. One is a revised resolution. There are two conditions that needed to be revised, and I'll talk about those in a bit during my presentation. Those are on page eight and page 10 of this resolution. Also, another item is an email that was received from Mr. Carlos Bedell early this morning and expressing his concern of the project, basically in terms of the size of the project itself, the variances, and the narrow street conditions that we have on Summit Drive. And I'll talk about those items also. So this is a perspective of the proposed project, and just to kind of orient you, probably most of you are quite familiar with the large wall that has been there since, I believe, 2002 that was constructed. That wall is to remain. The current owners have no desire to modify it or touch it. It's quite a substantial structure, and so one aspect of this project is keeping new building away from that wall as much as possible to not have any effect on its structural soundness. Those two parking spaces are currently private and are proposed to remain private, and we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail as well. Big picture, this project is located on the very western edge of Corder Madera. To the left of this is the city of Larkspur. Project here is 52 Summit. Just south of the project site is a vacant lot that we'll talk about in a little bit as well. In terms of the project summary, the project conditions, the existing FAR is 22 percent, the allowed is 41, I'm sorry, the proposed is 33 percent, and the allowed is 41 percent. So they're well under the maximum FAR that's allowed. The lot coverage is the first variance that they're asking for. They're asking for a total of three variances, and the first one being the lot coverage. There was a last-minute realization that myself and the applicant saw, and that actually the variance they're asking for is not 43 percent, 44 percent as originally stated, but is only 39 percent. And the reason that is, is because the plans initially counted the two parking spaces that are next to the retaining wall. And in our code, there is a section that says that required parking spaces count towards lot coverage. And the mistake was made in counting both those two spaces next to the retaining wall and the two spaces in the garage. Those two spaces in the retaining wall should not have been counted, so the correction's been made, so we've gone from a variance of requesting 44 percent down to a variance requesting 39 percent. So that's that clarification. Apologize for that late-minute change. In terms of the setbacks, the front setback for Christmas Tree Hill is flexible, and that is because Christmas Tree Hill is a unique area. Property lines are very unique in terms of where they're located in relation to the various roads, and the roads, as you all know, are quite narrow. So the existing home is quite far away from the street, way up there on the hill at 32 feet away. The proposed home, the proposed garage, is going to be approximately 3 and 1/2 feet away, and this meets the code again, because the code allows for flexibility in front-yard setbacks. Code doesn't allow for flexibility in side and rear yard setbacks in Christmas Tree Hill. So the next variance request is for the rear setback. The existing home is approximately nine feet from the rear property line. The proposed home is going to be approximately seven feet from the rear property line, and that's why a variance is requested. Required is 25 feet. And I'll talk in more detail of how staff was able to make the findings regarding these variances. The left-side setback, or the south side, meets all of the required setbacks today and in the future, so I didn't go into detail of that. The last variance request is for the right side, or north side, setback, and that is the setback that's closest to the neighbor. And I'll show this in a graphic, but just probably easier just to show it in a graphic first. So kind of a busy part of the site plan, and I apologize, it's a little bit small, but if you want to focus in on the plans you have in front of you, this is saying that the existing setback is five feet, four inches away. The new setback for the lower part of the house is going to be approximately nine feet away, and the new setback for the upper floor is going to be 18 feet away. I'll go back here. So we're going from the building being five feet away to the lower part of it being nine feet away, which meets the setback, and the upper part of it being 18 feet away, which meets the setback. The only thing that doesn't meet the setback is the retaining wall that is located right in here, and that is going to be just under three feet away. The code requires that retaining wall to be six feet away. So that's the right-side setback, and that retaining wall is necessary to construct these stairs that wrap around the garage. This will be shown a little bit more on the elevations. Any questions on that before I move on, or you want me to keep going?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think so.
The overall site plan showing the existing residence is hashed here, and the proposed residence is going to be, you know, basically right at the same location except extending towards the left or towards the south. Walking down, this is the walkway leading to the elevator, and which the elevator goes to the lower floor. Elevator also goes to the media room above the garage, and then the elevator goes all the way down to the garage itself. Site plan also shows the two existing parking spaces by the retaining wall, also shows the turning movements. There's some question, including in the email attached that came tonight, of access in and out of the driveway, I'm sorry, in and out of the garage, and the applicant has shown that, the turning radii for both of those. The existing proposed elevations, first looking, if one was looking up from Summit Drive, this is what you see today, you could if weren't so many trees, and this is what's proposed. Just orienting you, the large retaining wall, the proposed garage, media room above, elevator shaft going to the lower floor and the upper floor here. Property line to the right. Existing proposed north elevation is shown here. The neighbor to the north is the closest. The architects provided this outline of what the old house blocks in terms of airspace, so I just highlighted that in red so you can see. This is how far the original house came out. This is where the new house will be. Obviously, the new house is going to come out here, where the old house didn't occupy any of this space. It just kind of gives you a comparison of existing and proposed. Looking down at the south elevation, again, the existing home, basically just located on the flattest part of the lot, up at the top of the lot, a single-story home with a deck, and then the new elevation showing, again, the majority of the home on that same flat spot, but then cascading down with the other parts of the building. Lastly, the back of the house, or the west elevation, really only visible from the two folks in Larkspur, proposed and existing, I'm sorry, existing and proposed. And again, this square shows how the building was kind of originally pushed quite a bit to the left, or in this case, to the north, as opposed to the new building. FAR calculations are shown here. I won't try to read this to you, this is a single sheet, quite complex in terms of calculating what floor area ratio counts. Our code says that if a portion of the building is, if the distance between the ceiling of a room and the exterior grade is less than five feet, in other words, the building is, you know, a large portion of it is underground, then one does not count that towards floor area ratio. And so that's what the architect's shown here, the areas that are not counted towards FAR because they are, you know, more or less subterranean, and the areas that do count. And then this, so there he's showing it in plan view, there he's showing it as a table form, and here he's showing it at three different, four different sections of the building. Example here, you can see that the majority of these, all these rooms are more or less underground, so they don't provide any bulk or mass or visual impact to the neighborhood. And I believe that's the purpose of this section of the code. Obviously, a big project on a very narrow street with lots of, not a lot of room, so the applicant has provided a construction management plan. Fortunately, the owners of 52 Summit also own Three Sunrise, also own the vacant lot south of 52 Summit. So they are willing to have quite a bit of the construction staging, vehicles, porta-potty, dumpsters on sunrise, and then be able to access down and do the demolition and the construction of the home. Minimizing the impact on Summit, the designer also shows, obviously, using those two parking spaces near the retaining wall for dumpsters and parking if need be, but hopefully minimizing the use of Summit and doing as much as they can off of Sunrise and Larkspur. I have notified the planning director of Larkspur to be aware of this, but he didn't have any, he hasn't responded to any comments. So that is the construction management plan. In your packet also, it shows, the architect provides the schedule for construction, the projected schedule. The next slides are just a series of slides around the neighborhood showing houses that I think are somewhat similar, excuse me, with garages, you know, almost right on the street, and houses up above, a fairly common scenario on Summit Drive and Christmas Tree Hill in general. Most of these, I think, are actually on Summit. This one's quite dark, but large garage here, house up above, two-car garage, house up Again, more garages with house behind. The applicant did reach out to the neighbors. They received letters of support from all the folks that are outlined here in yellow. Those letters are in your packet. There was, one resident did come in asking about, concerned about the impact of the project. She lives on 71. She and I spoke, and I showed her the plans. She just hoped that, you know, any vegetation that was removed would be replaced and hopefully, you know, minimize any impact to her privacy. I encouraged her to come to the meeting or submit a letter, but she chose not to. And then, of course, she received a letter from the gentleman this evening at, where is he, 92, which I want to say is even south of here. It's off this map, it's 92 Summit.
Just one point, if Three Sunrise was not yellowed, that's our property at Larkspur. We are obviously in support of the.
But you didn't submit a letter. No, just kidding. Okay. Thank you. Okay, next, going on to, and to talk about some of the unique characteristics and special circumstances of this lot for these three variances. I'll go back up to the site plan. So the first is the topography of the lot. It's obviously extremely steep, as you can tell by these sections. It's extremely steep in the lowest portion, where it's closest to Summit, and then as you go up, there is a natural flat spot near the top, and that flat spot, I believe, was expanded with the construction of the original home. So one of the special circumstances is the topography of the lot and the steep slope as well as the flat at the top of the lot. The second unique circumstance is the, well, I kind of already said it already, the location of the existing building pad and trying to utilize that existing pad to minimize grading and minimize impact to the land. And lastly is the large retaining wall, wanting to stay away from that as much as possible to not affect its structural stability. If, you know, if they were required to locate the building and meet the rear yard setback, which is the biggest, one of the larger requests, here is the 25-foot rear yard setback. So the entire building would have to be brought way down here, which would, you know, I'm sure could be possible, could be done, but you're getting much closer to this retaining wall, and you're impacting some of the existing large trees in this area. In terms of the, so that's the explanation for the rear yard setback, and the side yard setback, again, requiring, again, just for that small retaining wall, in order to not meet or not request that variance, probably the whole garage would need to be shifted, you know, to the left, or certainly that walkway could probably be wrapped around the other side of the garage, but again, that's getting close to the retained wall. Lastly, the lot coverage variance. Lot coverage variance, staff was able to make the findings for that based upon, one, the topography of the lot and the need to construct, or the desire to construct the home with the elevator way, the elevated walkway, and the entrance way adds additional square footage that's over three feet in height that the original home didn't have. The original home, you had to walk up numerous steps, you know, to get to the home, so one of the desires of the project is to have a, you know, weather-free or weather-protected entrance. Secondly, the, given the joint ownership of the vacant lot, 52 Summit and Three Sunrise, and the restrictions that have been put on Three Sunrise to, I'm sorry, the restrictions that have been put on the vacant lot to never be developed, that is another aspect that staff is able to support, the lot coverage variance, because the lot itself, though in reality, is just this piece of property, given that this piece of property is owned by the same folks, will never be developed. If they were able to merge or do a lot line adjustment, or if they chose to, then they would have a much larger lot, and the lot variance, lot coverage variance would not be required. As I talked about in the staff report, a year ago, you folks brought up the fact that why can't a lot line adjustment be done, or a lot merger be done? The applicants hired an attorney to look into the situation. They spoke with staff at Larkspur, and what happened back in the '80s is the city of Larkspur attached the vacant lot to Three Sunrise. And the city of Larkspur required Three Sunrise to not develop the vacant lot, and in doing so, they allowed Three Sunrise to develop. And so, and one direction, the previous, at the prelim, was asking the applicant to explore, merging those lots or moving that line, and after talking with their advisors, it proved to be, it was going to be very expensive, very difficult, and there wasn't really any assurance that the city of Larkspur would grant that, and it would require a meeting, a hearing before the city council of Larkspur. And all that, the applicant probably fill in some of those blanks of that, of why they've chosen not to modify this line. And to give the town of Corder Madera additional assurance that this lot will stay vacant, I've added a condition, and that's one of the conditions I've added in red, states that if that restrictive agreement that Larkspur imposed connecting Three Sunrise to the vacant lot, if that was ever to change, or anything was to happen, the connection between 52 Summit and the vacant lot would be created. And I kind of took this out of order. What the condition says is, the applicant shall provide a deed restriction or another legal document tying the vacant lot to 52 Sunrise, 52 Summit. So if anything changes between the connection of Sunrise and the vacant lot, we will have assurance in Corder Madera that 52 and the vacant lot are tied together. I hope I made that clear. If not, feel free to ask questions. It is complicated. So with all that, the materials board is shown here, shows all the different materials board that the applicant will be, that the exterior of the building will have. I didn't go into details of the various floor plans, I can certainly do that if you like. I also wanted to talk about the landscaping. There is an Arbus report regarding the removal of the oak tree that is proposed at, just above the garage, sorry, going the wrong way. Arbus report took a look at that. He saw that in general, it was, the tree was in good health, however, there is some signs of sudden oak death syndrome attached to the tree. It is in a precarious location, he commented. If it was to fail, it would most likely fall on the road, cars, or pedestrians. As a condition of approval, the applicant has agreed to mitigate the loss of that oak tree by planting two oak trees just to the left, just to the left of the existing one. Lastly, in terms of landscaping, the applicant is proposing vines to shield and soften the large retaining wall. As you saw in the staff report back in 2002, when they built the retaining wall, there was a condition to soften that with landscaping, and that never took place. And the applicant is proposing these vines as opposed to the wood trellis that was originally approved. Pardon me?
Peter.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Would they show the step lights or the light? Any effects?
So with all that, staff is able to make all of the findings for the design review, for the Christmas Tree Hill, this is in the Christmas Tree Hill overlay, and also for the three variances, the side setback, rear setback, and lot coverage variances. I do have the findings themselves here available to review or look at. Before I put that up, lastly, this was reviewed by the Christmas Tree Hill Building and Design Committee, and their comments are attached to the packet as well as my response to some of their questions.
That's what I didn't see.
And here are the, so I have the design review findings in three different slides, and the Christmas Tree Hill findings in three different slides, just to be able to read them if we need to refer to specific ones, and then the variance findings as well. So with all that, staff does recommend approval of the attached resolution, the modified attached resolution. The one other condition that was added by Public Works that didn't get into the original packet was that the applicant shall investigate the easement that's on the west side of the property and determine if there are any, who owns that easement, and if there is actually a sewer line in there or is not, we have some conflicting information. The old title report says there is, but our maps show there is not, so there's a condition in there to clarify that at the time the building permits in the middle. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. As is our custom, we'll go to the commissioners here to ask clarification questions of staff before we hear from the applicant. And with that said, I'm going to start over with you, Phyllis. Any clarification questions for Mr. Boyle?
Just one, Phil. You mentioned you had met with the neighbor who had some concerns and had worked things out. I notice in these letters, there is one from Victor and Regina Chandler.
Okay, yes.
It's a couple from, it is.
Right, they had some comment.
The page before the blue one where they were concerned about the privacy to their master bedroom.
Right, yes.
Did you talk to them also?
I did not talk to them directly, but I believe the applicant and the property owners, and they could probably.
So they're okay.
They could speak to that.
Perfect.
Please, please, thank you. With that said, we'll want to see that slide of the plan view that shows the relationship of the two buildings to help clarify just what is that relationship and so forth. If you can look at that. There was, the slide that has the yellow lot lines also has ghost images of the building footprints. And it shows approximately there.
Right.
So that would show approximately the relationship between those windows and the house that made the comments on that.
They show they're on Marina Vista Avenue, not on Summit.
Correct, 214 Marina Vista is in the town, city of Corder Madera, city of Larkspur, and is right here. So this is actually Marina Vista, the house next door. The house next door is actually on Sunrise.
This house?
42 provided a letter of support, I believe.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, then, anything else from you for staff?
No, not at this time.
All right. Dr. Bundy?
The two lanes that are on there, North Lane and Owlswood, these are nonexistent?
Correct.
Okay. And if the applicant was coming forward without the two parking spaces created by the retaining wall and was asking to do that in addition to everything else that was done, how would that be looked at in regard to lot coverage?
I'm sorry.
They would be coming forward with, you know, two private parking spaces uncovered and two covered parking spaces in the garage. How would planning look at that in relationship to lot coverage as a new proposal over what the existing building is there now?
Sure. So, how we look at lot coverage with the parking is that the two spaces in the garage are counted towards lot coverage. And they're counted towards lot coverage because they have a building over them, a garage over them that's over three feet in height. Those two parking spaces that are not covered next to the retaining wall are extras, they don't have to have those, and they are now counted towards lot coverage.
Okay. The, I guess the other issue, I'm still trying to get my head around how Larkspur could put a restriction on 3 Sunrise for a lot that's in Corder Madera, and how that would come about. And I appreciate that both Larkspur and Corder Madera are trying to see this as an undeveloped lot. And when we look at this in relationship to 52 and sort of consider that as part of 52, the lot coverage is not as much of a concern because it would fit in.
Right.
And I guess I'm having trouble understanding the total legal implications on that, maybe the applicant can address that, because this undeveloped lot still has all the parcel taxes and everything to go with that.
Right.
So, maybe I'll defer to the applicant when they address this.
Yeah, I think they could certainly provide more information, and I can provide more after them if you like.
Okay. And then, in relationship to this lost sewer line, this is just up to the construction crew to sort of excavate and see if there's anything there?
Well, it's, no, it's more of getting assurance from doing research beyond what Public Works could do and finding out exactly, you know, who, what is under that easement, if it is, you know, an active sewer line. Our Public Works staff believes that 3 Sunrise and Marina Vista, and the applicants may be able to say this, you know, their sewer drops down towards the road this way. So, he's not, he's kind of baffled why an old title report shows that as a sewer easement. But that condition that he provided says they need to, you know, very carefully research and figure out, you know, what is underneath there. If there is something underneath there that can't be covered over, then, and the applicant is aware of this, then the applicant would, or the project would have to, would not be able to construct this, these concrete steps over the easement. That would not be a, you know, talking to a designer, not be a deal killer for the project. This whole, you know, area is quite level, this patio could still exist, and nothing be on the easement.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Jennifer, do you have any questions for staff at this point?
I guess, can you just clarify, this is, I think, similar. Similar with what Commissioner Bundy asked, but so is there a deed restriction right now on the parcel to the south prohibiting any construction on that parcel?
There is, there is legal documentation, I don't know if it's specifically called a deed restriction, connecting 3 Sunrise, oops, 3 Sunrise to the vacant lot.
Okay.
And as, say it again, because I didn't say it very clearly the first time, as a condition of this approval, there will also need to be a deed restriction or a legal connection between 52 Summit and the vacant lot. So, in case anything ever happens between Larkspur and the vacant lot, if that goes away for some reason, we're covered, and those two parcels in Corder Madera are tied together, and the vacant lot will remain vacant.
Okay. And then, my other question is, who has responsibility for the existing retaining wall? Is it the applicant, such that if there was any damage to the retaining wall during construction, that it would be their responsibility to fix it?
It is the...
Which I'm sure would benefit them anyway, because, you know, we are a house sliding down the hill, so.
Yes, the retaining wall and the parking spaces were approved by the planning commission and the town council because that's a requirement back then, and so those are all privately owned by the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Nicola, your questions for staff?
Sure. One quick question, Phil. If the project would not have included a covered parking, the garage?
Right.
Would planning have requested to add at least one covered parking space structure?
Yes, the code requires all single-family homes to have one covered parking space and at least one covered parking space in a total of two. So, if they chose, if they chose to do this project without the garage, they would be asking for a parking variance to not meet the covered parking space requirement.
Thank you.
Just to, well, you can also, you can also meet that with a carport as well, just...
They could literally cover one of those two spaces that are outside the retaining wall, that would...
Not necessarily, yeah, not necessarily a garage.
Can I ask one more question? If the garage didn't, if there was no garage, would they need a variance on the lot coverage at all or no? Because it looks like it's 600, I was trying, sorry, I didn't have my calculator with me, but I was trying to follow the square footage variance, so...
Uh-huh.
If, right now, they're about 1,000 square feet, or, sorry, this is based on the wrong calculation, on 44 percent, but...
Right, so now it's down to 600.
And the garage is 600 feet.
Mm-hmm.
So, would they actually not require a variance, and the parking area is included here, I guess, so that's about 1,000 feet? So, I'm just asking hypothetically.
I think, I think you are correct. I haven't crunched those exact numbers, and the designer may know that, but I think you're probably...
Somewhere in the ballpark.
Pretty close.
It'd be a very small variance if any would be, okay, got it. Thank you.
All right. My questions are this, did the applicant provide, or does the town have any history of the structural plans for that retaining wall?
We, yes, we have the plans on file. I know the designer has looked at the retaining wall and looked at those plans.
So, but they mentioned the possibility of surcharges being, creating a disadvantage for the wall, so, I mean, that would infer that somebody's worried about surcharging that wall by building over it, if they don't know enough about it. Or can they define what would be the surcharge, you know? I'm just asking that, rather than it being sort of a nebulous comment that it either is a possibility of surcharge if they build over it or it isn't, you know? So, that's something that the department would have to take on. The tree replacement is two of the oaks and 24-inch boxes, right?
Correct.
That's it. And I noticed in the resolution, I just have a question here, where it says, "Now therefore be resolved..."
Did you mention the page, please?
I'm saying, now, now therefore be resolved, it's on the front page. That, it says lot coverage at 43.7 percent, which is going to drop to 39 percent, and then we have 31 percent required. Is that the right verbiage for that? Should it be 31 percent?
It should be 31 percent.
Allowed.
Maximum allowed.
Right, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so we saw the relationship to 14 Marina Vista, and I think that we didn't hear from 47 and 57 Summit, is that correct? There was no commentary from those neighbors whatsoever?
Correct, I have to look, I'm out, make sure.
Then, the plans are stamped September 23rd. It appears that the Christmas Tree Hill comments were all September 27th, is that correct?
The Christmas Tree Hill comments were quite a bit earlier, yes.
Okay, so I see that...
Which normally happens.
The, well, 7/26, so they may not have had the September 23rd plans in their possession as to why they asked specific questions that are actually addressed by the plans.
That's correct. There were some, you know, there were some last-minute changes to the plans, nothing substantial that staff thought would warrant going back to the Christmas Tree Hill dwellers. Normally, the Christmas Tree Hill Dwellers Association looks at the plans, you know, quite early, because there's five folks that need to review them all, and so they usually take, you know, two or three weeks to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, before the applicant gets up there, I would just like to say, I know it's been a long journey for you on this one, and I think that the preparation that's on between staff and the applicant is extraordinary, and it's, there's a lot of information here that's very solid. So, with that said, please make your presentation.
Thank you for those comments. I'm Mike Cunningham. Try that again. Thanks for those comments. I'm Mike Cunningham, and this is my wife, Leslie. We've been residents in Larkspur for 30 years. The first 17 years, we lived in the Chevy Chase Court area, and for the last 13 years, we've lived at that 3 Sunrise Lane property. We have two daughters, Melissa and Katie. They both attended schools here, Neil Commons, Hall, and Redwood. We love this community. We bought this property, 52 Summit, in 2007. That was largely a defensive move, quite frankly. We have beautiful views from our property in, on 3 Sunrise Larkspur. We were very concerned that there would be jurisdictional issues between Larkspur and Corder Madera. We'll get into more of those. If someone was to develop the property, the vacant lot on 52, and we were very concerned that all of a sudden our beautiful views of the bay would be eliminated because of a construction that would be put in front of us in the Larkspur side. So, we purchased it as a defensive move, and much to our delight, our oldest daughter got married last year, and she's very interested in living near her parents, and we took this as an opportunity to look about what we might be able to do with this property, and we've worked with Bill O'Callahan on this project over the last couple of years, and we've been very blessed to have the support of kind of the neighbors around us. We've worked closely in terms of having conversations with them about this development, and we're pretty darn excited about moving forward and starting construction on this property. So, I know there were some questions about the very, very, very unusual restriction that was put on that vacant lot with Larkspur. I can answer those questions now, or we can wait until after the designer goes through his presentation, whatever you would prefer.
Okay. So, that would be sort of the extent of your comments that you'd like to make. All right. I think we'd like to hear from the designer, and then we'll go into questions for each of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, how do I? I can get out. I'm Bill O'Callahan, the designer of the house. Where do I go from here? So much has been said. Move this thing over here. I mean, essentially, what I was trying to do, the request...
You'll need to speak directly into the microphone.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Was just to create, well, to replace the existing house with a new two-story house and create an all-weather attachment from the street at Summit to the house, and with the two-car garage and the media room above, and an elevator connecting, connecting, excuse me. Another elevator connecting the garage to the media room above garage, and an elevator ultimately landing at the lower floor of the new house. The other thing I was trying to do was, in order to place the house in what is really the best location on the site up there, and basically pull the house back from the property lines and improve a lot of the bad parts of what's up on that hill, which is a giant house that basically comes too close to the property line and towers over everyone. And what I tried to do was to take the floor levels, I dropped the main floor of the house down a foot and embedded the house back into the hill as much as possible, and trying to get the ridge line down to kind of preserve their view and to preserve light and air kind of for Victor and Regina, who are the house on Marina Vista. In this process of doing the floor plan, let's see, overall layout, creating, along with the garage and the elevator, was to create basically a footpath entryway, too. And that way, it seemed most efficient is to hold the house, the garage, back from this north property line and carve it in the hill here. And the actual walkway comes up the north side, cuts underneath the bridge, there's sort of a small bridge there for the, that the elevator connects to the house. And through that, I enter the house in a decent, close proximity to the middle of the house, on the lower floor, straight across to an interior stairway, and there I am on the main floor. Let's see, what other aspects here? Let me just look at this for a second. In regards to the FAR, there's some things that some of you haven't seen, I guess, some of the things we did do, and we've changed a couple of things. A lot of, some of the changes were based on the hill dwellers' comments. One thing I did here was I moved the garage door over into the middle of the garage and moved the pedestrian door to the north side of the garage, just making it a tighter connection here, so that when you come down the stair, you enter the garage right away into the pedestrian door. There was a comment about whether those stairs emptied out onto the street, and they don't, they come down, and they basically turn 90 degrees into the garage right there. Back into the general design of the house, the lower floor has three bedrooms and two baths, has the mechanical, the laundry, and some storage. Then upstairs, the general floor plan is the great room with the stair, kitchen, and the master bedroom and bath are on the upper floor with a half bath. There isn't a lot of space to have a yard on this property, so part of it, the design is for the roof deck. The roof decks that actually cover the downstairs are essentially like the outdoor space, and I've tried to push them back to a bit off the property line by going nine and a half feet to that point. In a funny way, I just noticing that the house, even if I took out the entire lower floor, I would still need a lot coverage variance, because the deck, if I just left the deck, it would still count, and I would still need that variance even if I had reduced the entire lower floor of the house. So, it's, it has a function, that roof deck. Let's see, where else am I? In regards to the FAR, if you want to talk about that, it is on this. And this is a comment from back when we first were here, before. This one's a little more highlighted, if I show you. Can I show them this way? Basically, it shows you some of these areas a little more highlighted, that what doesn't count, that's considered subterranean, and with that five-foot dimension from natural grade to the bottom of the floor. And so, that was one of the things that you had asked for.
Good, yeah, there may be questions about that later?
Yes, okay. Let's see, some of the other... Let's see, some of the other, let's see what else we had here. Regarding the landscape, they did go over that, that we're going to remove the oak tree where the garage is going, and replace it with two twenty-four-inch box oaks. And we also are proposing to grow the creeping fig that had originally been planned for that wall, for the great wall. And in order to kind of change the appearance of that. Some other things regarding the landscape are, these are the two trees, the two new oaks here. This is an existing redwood and some of the other trees that exist. This exists on Marina Vista. We're going to do some random planting in the hillside and a footpath that goes around. Plantings in the back, there's a light well in the back of the house. Create a footpath around the house. Probably create a shed, a hedge here. We may just leave Dick and Shelley's fence alone here, that you see, and plant in front of it a bit. And I also want to plant along here in front of their stuff and potentially grow the vine on this retaining wall, too. Along the north property line. Let's see, we discussed gray water last time? We're looking into that, into doing the gray water. It has to be downslope. And I've specified some of the plantings that can be, that can qualify for that downslope. And it's something I'll have to submit to MMWD ultimately for their, they have, you know, four basic qualifications. And we meet most of them, basically. And the only thing I, reservation is I don't, I don't want to get that gray water near my bioretention. All the drainage is being done in a device here above the existing retaining wall. And we don't want to mix that. The civil engineer says I don't want any of that. So I'll have to make sure that whatever gray system feeds things that aren't going to reach there and/or feed into some of these things. And they have to be at least fifty feet, or no greater than fifty feet, I believe, from the source, which is going to be primarily the washing machine.
He doesn't want that gray water to intermix with the drainage system of the wall, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And the bioretention is, that's where the bioretention swale is being put. What else on that, on that stuff? Let's see, I could cut right into the variance. Basically, I've, what I, what I'm trying to do is, you know, take a house that, if it complies, it's going to be like this. And I'm trying to squish it and spread it out a bit, to make it work, to make it fit into the site, to make it not stand out, make it not too tall, meet the height limit. And that's one reason why this spreads out. And like I said, even if I took away all of this square footage, it would still be the same lot coverage, this box here. And that's one reason. The other reason for the, that's regarding the lot coverage variance. But regarding the side setback variance here, in order to make all the rise and run work, which is, I believe it's fifty-three risers, it's seven-point-two inches. It's on here somewhere. Let's see what that number is. Yeah, it's basically a thirty-two-foot rise. I need to cut this in here in order to make this work, to get this landing, to get this first stair run, and then come up and turn and turn and turn, and get this to work. And that is pushing this wall to about eight feet right in the corner here. And that's what the side setback is for. I think the rear setback variance is pretty self-explanatory, being that it's in the middle of the lot. Not in the middle of the lot, but basically right down here, and forces everything downhill, which we feel is pushing us too close to the wall and-
So do me a favor while you're standing there, and you've got that map in front of you and that board, slide it to the left and break it on the section of the building there, in the top right-hand corner of that plan set, about where that rear setback normally would fall.
Oh, it's a-
Just slide that left, this one over, like that, right?
There, yes, right about, at least there.
That's about where the rear setback would be?
Yeah.
Okay.
In regards to your comments about the wall, it's, Paul Pieri designed it. It's a very significant, significantly engineered wall. It's shotcrete tiebacks. They did the first two rows, and then soils engineer in the field decided it was just so much rock that they omitted the lower row of tiebacks. And all of that is documented, the inspections, we have all of that information.
Great.
So it's been really good. I've been working with Tim, too, who built the wall, to talk about just, what did he do? How many trucks, what kind of dirt, soil, the process that he went through to do it? And it just doesn't have, it's not designed for a downforce, you know? So it's not something we can build on or anything. And we are, if you look at the, this particular section, which is here. The, that's right, it's right here. This wall. I mean, it's significantly far, this, it doesn't show up in this as well as it does, right? Here, really, it's way down there. And all those tiebacks are at about, I guess it's a fifteen-degree angle. And that's in the soils report. We've talked with Dave Oldness, he's reviewed that and talked about that in his report.
So, and I would just like you to try to focus and wrap up on the variances that we have to have the required findings for. And you've reviewed that list, I'm sure, to no end. So, you know, it's our job to address those findings, particularly the strict application of the town zoning code. So, we're not granting a special privilege in a sense, in, is consistent with limitations upon other properties in the vicinity. I think you can see that by a tour of Christmas Tree Hill, so I don't know if you want to explain that any further. But the strict application of the town zoning code will result in a practical difficulty and unnecessary physical hardship, which will deprive the property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. So that is one of the primary elements of finding for these variances. So if you have a statement that you would make in addition to what's written in the staff report, I would like to hear that.
Well, it is not uncommon to find this situation, I think, on Christmas Tree Hill, a garage with a home. That is, it's something we're trying to achieve here. It's just that the parcel does have significant constraints due to lotslope, due to the wall. And it, we just, you know, I, let me see if I'm describing that.
Well, you're a person who's been familiar with the design for a long time now, and-
Yes.
Your objectivity is limited at this point. But, you know, we're looking at it fresh eyes, and as the public will look at it. And if the owners weren't directly behind the property and you had strangers back there, you would have to justify this variance to all of those people, so-
Yeah, well, I think it's just, what I've done is, in order to bring the house down and make it, you know, to reduce the mass so that it's not this giant house, I've needed to stretch it out, which just requires lot coverage. And I could shove it into one side, and it just, it wouldn't, with a six-foot setback. And I just think the best way to, for everyone, is to really reduce the size and reduce the mass that way, is to press it down, stretch out the footprint on this lot. And I think it's necessary to-
All right.
Even just achieve the upper floor of the house.
So you've given a good colorful explanation of your intent and approach to the design. And is there anything else you'd want to say before I ask the other commissioners to see if they have questions for you or the owner?
You know, we have a construction timeline, some of that brought, came up with-
Yeah.
-Hill dwellers, so I don't know if you want to go into it, if you've read through it, if you want to have any questions regarding it.
I think for the record, it would be good for you to state it, and in very short sequence.
Yeah, it's, that here. Essentially, what we want to do is, starting with a demo of the house here, we can bring trucks and debris boxes and do staging in the existing parking here. People can park, work, crew can park up in their driveway up here. They can get seven, sometimes eight cars in their driveway, if need be. We get to use this part, a part of their yard for staging and access. We can put portable toilet up here. We have a garage here for tools, storage, more supplies and things. We'll put a little track across the grass, and there's an easy track for a bobcat to enter this property from sunrise. So that's how a lot of the flow can work. They'll first, like I said, demo the house down into here, and then basically the excavations will start. We're not sure which one goes first, but we're going to create a chute here, down the hill, over the wall, and down into the trucks or debris box. And we're, you know, proposing to do like a closed chute to minimize dust and dirt and noise and all that. And that way, they can load everything out that way. They can excavate that into here, they can excavate this down into there. They won't be pulling any dirt out this way, it's just probably too risky. So they can do more staging up here. A lot of these things are interchangeable. Once we do the concrete, we can do, use this pad for staging when we're doing the house. So we'll have more space once we actually form the garage. We'll have a flag person here on particular days that this is busy, and they can have radio control up Summit and down. We're also proposing to do a screen here and a fence for these two adjacent neighbors, just to reduce dust and debris and anything that might be affecting them right here. We're also proposing to do another portable toilet down there, since the rise is so far in the distance. The trees will be protected. We're erosion control and a tree protection plan when we submit for building permit.
And for the record, the rough timeline of demo, then excavation, then concrete, then construction.
This fall would be, if in a perfect world, is just verify utilities, demo the house, put in erosion control. I'm just summarizing. Install any, and then basically get ready for winter. This, that's what would happen this fall. Get rid of the house, clear the site, prepare it with whatever erosion control devices need to get us through this winter. And then, in April, start with excavation of either garage, house. We may attack it with two crews, two separate crews. And basically, that's going to take us all the way through, that starts in April, all the way through July of next year. And then, from May and July, then we will do tiebacks, do the garage, waterproofing, concrete. So basically, we're hoping to get all the excavation, all the concrete drainage in place by July two thousand and seventeen, by the end of the summer of next year. And that, by then, then we would start on the buildings at that point. But we really need the concrete base in.
And projected completion is the end of twenty eighteen or so?
Yeah, yeah, July twenty-eighth, and then going another ten, eleven, twelve months beyond that.
Okay.
That's realistic. And it could be sooner, but we got to be realistic.
I'm not a betting man, all right. All right. So, I think that covers, from our perspective, at least my perspective, before I ask commissioners for questions. I'd like to get into that. So I'm going to start with Nicolo on my left and ask him if he has any questions for the architect or for the owner.
Sure, I do have a question on the site plan, A dash eleven. And if I can have the pointer, if I can borrow the pointer. Okay, so, would you say that this line here, is this the current, more or less?
Yes, that's where that slough that you see now, that's falling off the hill, yeah. Essentially, that is that line.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's kind of, the story pole is depicting the roof. So realize that the garage doors are still another, almost two feet in from there, when you're looking at it.
Right, so, the garage, you can say that at some point, in the biggest point from the center line of the road, is recessed almost ten feet, pretty much.
From the center of the road?
No, from the edge of the road now here.
Yes, yes.
Pretty much, this is like ten feet?
Yes. Well, it's three-and-a-half, probably approximately eight or nine feet.
Eight-and-a-half feet?
Yeah.
That's it, thank you.
Jennifer?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Phyllis, your thoughts, please, for the architect, questions for him?
Okay, I just had more of a comment to make, having to do with the variances and the setbacks.
Is it something that the architect can address, or? For, because I would like to get questions.
In a way, it has to with the right-side setback. I want to be sure that I had the, the existing condition is five foot four inches.
Yes.
Because of the retaining wall, you want it to be three feet, correct?
Yes, yes.
So your variance is actually only two feet four inches.
More, you're saying?
From the current lines. And that would be the minimum you could work with, you feel, that, you need at least that much as a variance.
Well, I think what, the, I think you're discussing the house setback when you're talking five foot four.
You're talking about, I'm reading from the right-side setback.
Yeah.
The ordinance requirement is six foot, current condition is five foot four inches, and you are showing where the retaining wall is. Not the lower level of the house or the upper level, they're way back.
Correct.
But the retaining wall itself, where you need the variance, you're saying it's to be three feet. And I am asking you, is three feet the minimum amount?
That I need?
Yeah, is that, or?
It just seems-
Must it be three feet?
I just, I want it, because I want to grow things, I'd like to keep that wall. I didn't want to build right up on the property line, if that's what you're asking. Could I pull it closer, is that the question?
Closer to the existing condition, that's what I'm asking, the five foot four.
Oh, could I move it away from the property line?
In other words, the existing condition is five foot four inches, and you are asking for three feet. And I am asking you if the three feet is closer to the property line or further? Because if it currently is five foot four inches. We've accepted that variance, why would we be moving, you know, worrying about something that's less? It looks like it's going to be more.
So, no, no, so Phyllis, the house, there is a five foot four, but here's the three-foot retaining wall here. These are stairs, and the house, the garage, is actually nine foot.
Oh, yeah, that I know, the building, I'm talking about the retaining wall itself.
So it's, the retaining wall is closer to the property line than the existing structure is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that shouldn't be a problem, huh? I was thinking you were, I mean, to me, instead of looking at the ordinance requirements as we look at setbacks, I'd look at what exists and the pluses and minuses from there. And that's why I was wondering about, to me, the three-foot was more than the existing condition?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Okay. Okay.
So, just a moment, but it's, it's less to the property line than the existing condition?
Okay.
So, but it's just a retaining wall, it's not a structure-
Right.
-of the house or the building.
So, in my eyes, it does not create a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, at five-four, I have a twenty-eight-foot-high wall. At my condition, down the hill, I have a wall, three, three, basically. So it's a very different situation.
Mr. Cunningham, like to say something? Please step up to the mic so we have you recorded. Thanks.
The owners of the property on the lower end there very much wanted us to have a stairway for them to be able to egress out of their property down the hill.
Great.
And so we worked in conjunction with them in terms of kind of putting the stairway over on that side. They're the ones, the lower house over here, that's most closely impacted.
So they would, they would come across from here and come down that way?
Yeah, there's an existing fence that they'd be able to exit, and then they'd be able to go down that stairwell.
Got it. No, there's the gate.
That's their little gate.
So they'll have a gate.
And I, as requested, I started, I did do some spot elevations so that you could under, you had asked that specifically, I think, before, for those two properties.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. That was it.
Thank you. Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Is this going to have underground utilities?
That's a good question. I'm, I don't know if it's mandatory or not, but it's, is it mandatory?
No.
For me? Okay. Because at this point, what we're doing is, we may have the mast come in about here, and the meter is going to be in one of these little steps right here. The gas meter is here, and the water and sewer are in the, on the other side of the garage.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
There's a midline drop right now.
Mm-hmm.
That may change. I, you know, due to probably upgrading the size, I don't know that that midline drop right now is going to be enough for this house, but.
Just to clarify on the utilities, I mean, we do have a ordinance that requires utilities to be undergrounded, but are exceptions to that as long as they're requested by the town engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think that certainly makes sense to drop it in at a lower level than, you know, being further at risk from the trees and such, or visibly up in the air. The other question I had was the creeping fig. I know that grows up well, I didn't know that it grows down well, so.
I've been told it will.
Okay.
We can, we can, we've discussed whether stainless or steel wiring or cabling, something minimal. I don't want to get involved in mounting a lot of anything on that wall. I don't want to be penetrating it 100 times.
Yeah.
To put flammable lattice all over it. I just, you know, so we'll look at that.
Okay.
Possibility. But really, I want it to grab onto the wall.
Yeah. And then, just the other question was in regard to demoing the house. There's a lot of nice redwood that's still in the house, even though the house is no longer habitable or structurally sound. But is there any plan to recycle some of the redwood beams or the one-by-twelves?
Yeah, I was told that it's a, it's a building from up at Hamilton, some building that the Navy, I know it was an Air Force Base, but that's what I was told by one of the neighbors, that it was a building that they disassembled and built part of this house with that lumber. If it's still good, you know, it's, it's had a decent roof on it, so we'll just have to see how things are.
So, I mean, just from the standpoint of doing the demo itself, I mean, are you focused on just getting everything out of there, or trying to recycle some of that?
It's going to be done primarily by hand, so we'll be having a good look.
Okay.
You know, we can't really grab that thing with an excavator.
Yeah.
It's really, I mean, like, I've done large, you know, it could go in four hours, but that's not going to be the case, I think.
Okay. I think that would be great if some of that could be recycled and, you know, just not go into the landfill.
Right, right.
So, that's all.
Yeah, per Mr. Boyle's notice, I think that that is part of the town requirements now, and called out as to how it will be dispersed. So this reply to you and that question was to, they have to provide some summation of the disposal of specific elements, right? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. I believe Doug, Doug Bush sent you all an email in response to Commissioner Bundy's email about that we, through Zero Waste Marine, construction projects need to recycle a significant amount, if not all, of their materials.
Great.
Just one more clarifying question.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
I just have one more clarifying question on the retaining wall. And maybe it's on the proposed north elevation, but is there something that shows, is the retaining wall below grade from, I can't, I just was curious?
The existing retaining wall?
No, the new retaining wall that's being built.
The one on the north?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a, yeah, it's basically at grade. What it's doing is retaining this existing line. See that?
That's the.
This is basically, this is basically that elevation with the wall we're discussing omitted. It's retaining this.
So is the wall going to go at this level?
Yeah, correct. Basically, eight inches above that line, and then it drops at the street and turns.
Okay, thank you.
Can guard that? Could I, can you go to that, the site plan for a second? Just, you know, there'll be an encroachment involved in this. I want this wall doesn't stick up high, it basically drops down and turns. It might even angle a little bit more in the field in order to kind of retain this, keep the view lanes open.
This is the wall right here.
Yeah.
Correct. It goes up.
Yeah, it comes down, it comes down, and then it drops off. Similar to this wall, as you might have seen, this wall from here to here is almost a vertical. I mean, it's barely, but then it flattens out in that section.
Okay, thank you.
A couple of questions for you then. Have you ascertained with PG&E, the famous can and will serve letter, even though it's an existing home, you have to start service planning to get upgraded service for this?
Mm-hmm.
I looked at the neighborhood survey, it doesn't show where the pole is down here on anything that's included in this set of plans. But presumably, then underground, they would come down the pole, and you're thinking a mast would go here.
We are, we are, there is a mid drop right here, but we do have another pole here, so we may have another option.
So the department, building department, should be asking for that utility feed resolution as a part of the plan set, you know, that goes in. It's a thorny issue sometimes, right?
Yes, right.
And an expensive issue.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
Well, that's also, the subject of gas meter came up too. They used to be adamant about it being on the house, and now they want it nothing to do with the house. And that's why we're proposing to stick it down here in the planter.
Right.
And that's always, we know, a fiasco.
So I, we've heard some people speak about the deed restriction, and I don't think that there's any gray area, so to speak, about it, that it will ride with the property. It'll, the resolution will tie it to 52. And as they said in a famous movie, it's just Larkspur, Jake, right?
Right.
It's now going to be a piece of Corta Madera, so to speak, the deed restriction. And whatever happens, happens. But regarding that sewer easement up there, the town doesn't know what that is for any purpose at this time. And the title document doesn't describe it well enough, and it has to be cleared, right, at some point here, in order for this to get proceeded.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's.
The title, the title, the title document lists it as a sewer easement, and that's as, as far as it goes. It does, the title document does not say who the sewer easement is, is for. And the maps, Public Works looked at are various maps, and they do not, the maps do not show, for sanitation District One and District Two do not show a pipe underneath that easement.
Right. And there's no need for it to be used as a drainage of your property at Three Summit or Two Fourteen? Okay. So, I mean, that's.
Surface drainage.
Right, yeah, you know. So sewer easements are hard to get rid of, and it takes a letter from the.
Yeah, absolutely. They will, they will provide that letter.
Yeah. So I have a copy of the gray water resolution here, if you care to see it, but it, you know, we do want you to go through with that. That's important, but it says in your documents, you're going to install that.
And so is the condition.
Yeah, so with that said, does anybody have any questions they wish to ask the applicant or the architect? Last chance.
No.
Okay.
No, thank you.
We haven't heard from the public yet.
No. Right. Thank you. So with that said, we will open it up for public comment. So if there's anyone who would like to comment on this application, please step up to the microphone. You have three minutes to make a statement about the project at 52 Summit. I don't see anybody trying to stand up, so I will say that there is no public comment on this section. So we will close the public comment on this, and then we'll bring it back up here to the commission to discuss. So before us, there's a series of findings that we must acknowledge, and for the variances or for design review. So these guys have got it on the slide, and each commissioner, I would like you to acknowledge or take up any issue with these findings as they're called out in your staff report. So Phyllis, as we've looked through the findings, there's Christmas Tree Hill required findings, there is the.
Town ordinance.
Town, the variance and the conditions of.
Design review.
Design review. Great.
I do not have any problem in following the findings. As I said, as far as the ones having to do with the conditions, having to do with setbacks and variances, I am looking at it as the starting point being the existing condition rather than the ordinance requirement, because I feel that to get to the existing condition, a lot of work was done, and a lot of history went into it, so there was reasons to get to where they are now. And the changes are minimal when you look at existing conditions to the applicant's proposal. So I have no problem with the variances. I think each one of these, including the Christmas Tree Hill ones, I would not have any problem going along with the findings and supporting them.
Great, thank you. Dr. Bundy.
I can support the findings.
All right. Succinct. Jennifer.
I can also support the findings. I think the trade-off between the topography, which is very difficult, and keeping the existing pad more or less the same, I think makes sense. So I think the variances are appropriate in this application.
Thank you. Mr. Caldera.
I concur with everyone before me. I think that the building, by the way, it's, well integrates to the site really well, and it's well organized. I think that also part of, you know, the, the lot coverage is the finding that the, for the lot coverage is appropriate, given the fact that the garage, in addition to be a necessity, I think that it adds quite a bit to the site. It cleans up the site, you give more clearance to the road, it organizes well that area, it conforms with the surrounding. It is a plus. And secondly, the second variance, the rear conditions have minimal impact on the neighbors. And by allowing it, we augment the safety of the building, because you're recessing, recessing the building into the, away from the slope. And the third variance, I think that also is obvious. I mean, the stairs, I don't see it anywhere else where you could have done it. It's technically unfeasible to move it on the other side. So I completely support all the variances and the findings.
Thank you, Nicolo. Well expressed. So I have a couple of things to add, and I wonder if the staff would humor me in adding a condition of verification of survey to this condition of approval, that there would be a registered house placement survey and a data mark on the site that can be verified by the building department upon inspection at any time for elevation. Is that fair?
Yeah, well, let me, let me, let's just make sure we understand what you're referring to. So when the actual structure is, the forms are set, that there's actually verified survey of the setback distances from property lines to assure that it's actually meeting what the variances are providing here.
The survey will be placed on the site to provide the appropriate setbacks that can be verified by staff when they are out there.
So you want survey done prior to installing forms for foundation?
Yes, right. So that they have a.
Yep.
Registered survey that they can follow, right? That it goes on there. And that is.
Does the applicant have any, or under a few more?
Just a moment, yeah. So the purpose is clear in that, you know, we know it has to be established.
Sure.
To, because there, we're right up against the height, and we're right up, we're establishing these variant setbacks, and they have to be with there. So I'd have to open it back up to public comment. I didn't have any.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Public comment to take on this. Other than that, the, where did I have it? The PG&E issue may rear its head at some point. The, and having that can and will serve letter should be a part of the building department requirements of issuing a building permit. That's not our purview. And the only other thing, other item would be the language, the 31% allowed maximum versus required on the resolution. So otherwise, I would say that this is a complicated project, and that you guys have put an extraordinary amount of effort into it. And because it's so complicated, it needs that attention.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that the, the letters, the degree to which they've explored all of the options and gone through it is exemplary, and I'd love it if all applications came before us, this well detailed, it would be, this should serve as an example. It's a good, well-thought-out plan. And you responded to our requests from a year ago. So it's really, it's really great. So with that said, we have the design review and variance application before us, and someone needs to make a motion based on Mr. Boyle's corrected version.
Adam, did you get that wording?
The percentages are going to be corrected there.
I can make the motion if you guys want.
Please.
My action. Okay.
But you do have to read into it, the lot coverage variance is 39%.
Yes, sure, 39 instead of 43.7. Okay, so.
She wanted us to have the wording that we do whenever we read a motion.
Please, Nicolo, go ahead.
Okay, so make a motion for the approval of the design review and variance, application number PL dash 2016 dash 0074, DRC 0075, VRC, for a new 3,797 square feet, two-story residence, of which 2,432 square feet is counted towards the allowable floor area ratio. The application also includes a request for a side yard setback variance for the proposed plus or minus eight-foot-high retaining wall from the northern side property line. Three feet proposed, six, six feet required. A rear setback variance, seven feet proposed, 25 feet required. And the lot coverage variance of 39% proposed to 31% required.
That would be maximum, yeah.
Allowed.
Maximum.
Maximum.
Okay.
Second.
Should we say as amended because of what you added?
It would be as amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah.
Okay.
For Mr. Chase and staff.
All right. Commissioner Metcalfe?
Aye.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Commissioner Caldera?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right.
Good luck.
You're welcome.
All right. So let's move on, please, to 11. All right, so let's move on, please, to 11 Madrono Avenue. This is a design review application for a major remodel and third-level addition to an existing two-story residence with a variance application.
We could then sort of leave.
Can you guys take the conversation outside, please? Thank you. The town does keep the...
Yeah.
Yeah. This is a design review application for a major remodel and third-level addition to an existing two-story residence with a variance application for a front yard setback encroachment resulting in a 4,699 square foot three-level structure. We have previously looked at this item in a study session, I believe, and the story polls are up. And Mr. Bush, this is your presentation.
All righty, thank you. So, here we are, 11 Madrono Avenue. Here you can see in the vicinity map, it's about southeast of where we are, toward the border with Mill Valley. Moving on to the topography of the neighborhood and just looking at the general location of the property, as you can see, if you're looking at these topo lines here, this is a, you know, a pretty heavily sloped neighborhood. Majority, if not all of the lots you see here are sloped. You can see 11 Madrono Avenue here. It's a little difficult to see, but kind of a unique situation here is that the street right-of-way actually does extend to the, to the east of the property, although the pavement ends where you see here is indicated in gray. And again, just to the left here, this, I believe, is called Park Lane. This is also property of the town and has not been paved or developed. And there's others that continue down here as well. So, little, little bits and pieces of the, of the public right-of-way that make this kind of a, of a unique situation here. Also, you can see that in this neighborhood, the homes are relatively spread apart. There's some significant distance between the subject property here, the homes above off of Pleasant Avenue, and those down below off of Madrono. The homes below, garages face the street, while the structures themselves are oriented chiefly toward the south, southwest. Again, the structures above are oriented, you know, capturing, capturing the views that many of these homes have toward the, toward the southwest. Moving on here, this is a site plan again. I'm showing a number of things, but showing the topography of the lot, that it is quite, quite steep coming off of the street up to the curb, which I've marked here in this dark, dark line. The actual property line is shown with the dash line here, showing that the property line does not begin for some distance from, from the edge of the street. Further from there, in green, well, you can't really tell what color in the slate, but this is the setback for the lot and showing the proposed footprint of the, of the home. With this lot, basically, the front property line as defined in the municipal code is the shortest property line of budding the street. And because this is a continuous property line around the front as it curves around Madrono, back when the home was first constructed around 1971, I have blueprints here if you want to see, the front property line was established then as being the entirety of this, of this line here. So, rather than having a side setback as you would normally see, this lot is just a front setback here and a rear setback along the, I guess, the north there. So, you have a 25-foot front setback that continues from here all the way around to the front. And again, just to orient ourselves here, this is the garage, excuse me, this is the driveway leading up to the garage. You head in the street coming from the west here as the end of the street is right here, obviously. Here is, again, just trying to highlight, you have the, the site plan in front of you on the plans, but just to show how the footprint is changing with the, the proposed additions, here's the existing footprint and the proposed. As you can see, it's moving toward the south and the east. And there are additions to the, the first and the second level. It's an existing two-level home with a attached two-car garage. The proposal includes a third, third level, which is just over 1,200 square feet, as well as additions to the first and the second level. Going through the floor plans here a little bit to kind of look at the changes and look at the extent of the demolition of the existing structure, as well as the relationship of the home to the, to the setback on each, on each level. The setback is shown consistently in, in each of these floor plans right here, and it wraps around as well. We're mostly focused on the right here as that is the area of the requested variance for encroachment into the front setback. As you can see from numerous dotted lines in the, in the demo here of the existing, that a majority of the existing structure will be demolished. The garage will be maintained, as well as some, some walls along the north elevation as well. Moving on, this is the, the second level, the existing second level with the, with decks as shown. And as proposed, you can see the encroachment here will be, will be increased over the front setback. There's also slivers here, as highlighted on the site plan actually, of the areas that require variance, very small portions here and here, while the majority is, is off to the, to the right there, and will be highlighted in later slides. Here is the new third level that's being proposed, that will take the structure from around 23 feet in height to 30 feet in height, which is the maximum permitted in the R1A district where this is located. You can see in greater detail, obviously, on, on your own plans there, that bedrooms have been moved to the third floor. There's a deck here that extends over the second floor because this third floor is actually stepped back, stepped back from the, from the south, southwest to, to make use of the area above the, above the second floor there for, for a deck to take in the, the views up there. Moving on, this, as you had mentioned, this, this went through a preliminary study session in February, I believe, and this is kind of showing a comparison between what was proposed then and what is proposed now. There were, you know, there were a few, a few particular points. I've included the minutes as an attachment as well, but some of the points were, were to decrease the, the amount of glazing. There was some concern or interest in the amount of, in size of the windows shown. I should highlight here that this was the original proposal here and that at the top, this is the current, current proposal. So, you can see that the size of the windows has been decreased. There's more articulation, as I highlighted in the floor plans. The third floor has been stepped back, where previously it was flush with the lower and the second floor. And also, there's, there's been a deck, some decks that have been removed from the previous proposal, and there was some emphasis on lighting and basically questions about how lighting would, would, would spread or glare off-site due to the amount of glazing. And in response to that, there's quite a, quite a detailed lighting plan that we'll be going through in just a moment here to highlight that. Again, looking, looking at another elevation here, you can see that, that from this elevation, really because of the grade that slopes from the back of the lot down to the street before, from uphill essentially, you may have seen a single story and now there'll be two. Again, you can see how the, really, this is the third floor and the second floor, and the third floor has been stepped back to provide some articulation there. Again, kind of, this, this goes to show some of the topography of the lot, as well as the heights, which are measured both in the elevations on the plans and in the sections that were provided. Also showing the, the difference in the existing architecture and the proposed. I'm sure the architect would like to speak, speak more as, as far as the design intent here and the idea there, but just showing the, showing the existing proposed here. Here is a section, kind of showing how it complies with the height requirement. You know, as you may know from, from earlier projects, the, the height is measured from, from grade over, over the slope. So, it, it follows, it follows the grade as it's shown here. So, this is the 30-foot line, again, 30-foot line here, and it's been stepped back, maybe in, in part to, to comply with that. And the, the proposed does comply with the height, the height maximums. Here are some of the exterior lights or the extent of the exterior lighting that were shown, also included as an attachment in the, in the packet with, with step lights and other lights as well. I've attempted to show here, although it's not showing up too well, just a location, highlighting the location of the exterior lights in red, in red here. So, you know, as is standard practice, a condition of approval has been added that, you know, all proposed lighting must, must not glare off-site or create, basically contribute toward light pollution so we can remember what the stars look like. Again, here's the third floor with, in, in the plan, you'll see that they differentiate between step lights and larger, higher-mounted lights. There's also a landscape plan that is proposed. I've attempted to kind of highlight the new plannings here. A number of trees are proposed. And again, this is the elevation that you would see from the street. As you may know, if you had a chance to go out there, the, the home is elevated above the street and it's, it's quite steep along the front here. So, this, these trees here, when seen at, at an angle from the street, will further obscure views of the house and kind of help it to, help it visually to, to step into the, to the slope. Here again, showing the landscaping plan for comparison of, of one year on the bottom here to expected growth at 10 years with crape myrtles, oaks, other native drought-tolerant species as encouraged by the general plan. Now getting a little bit into the variance, as you know from recent experience, just 20 minutes ago, when we look at a variance, we, we're looking at very particular findings that have to be met, similar to design review findings, but specific to these, these encroachments. Here, we're looking at encroachment to the front setback, which is the only variance that's, that's requested here, as shown previously in the floor plans. The primary encroachment is here along the southeast side. The existing home encroaches by a small portion, as called out on the site plan. That was approved in 1991 with building permits. It did not go through a variance process as it may, as it really should have, but it was approved and that is the existing kind of non-conforming condition. The proposed plan further increases this encroachment, both in terms of the footprint of the building and also the eaves. So, to, to kind of differentiate here, a line, the architects provided a line here and a line here. The, the inner line is the front setback, which is what the footprint of the building must conform to. And this is showing the area that encroaches, as well as the area of existing encroachment. This portion here is the part of the eve that goes beyond the permitted line. And the reason there's a difference here is because the footprint has to be 25 feet from the property line. The eaves can extend six feet into the property line, and so ultimately, what you see in orange are the portions, and, and this as well, are the portions that require a variance, as well as a small sliver here and here as well. What makes this lot unique, as we saw looking at the topography of the lot, is that, you know, it is, it is a steep lot, which creates, which creates some hardship for the, for the applicant. It is, really what's unique is, is the curved front property line, which is something you do not see very often, and consequently, it's, it's very rare for a lot not to have side setbacks. And the reason this matters is because side setbacks are less restrictive than a, a front or a rear setback. So, in this case, R1A district, for, for example, the side setback is actually 10 feet. The street-side setback, which is, which is what applies here, is 20 feet. Because this is seen as a front setback, the, it's, it's 25 feet. So, it further limits the portion of the lot that can be built upon without requiring, without encroaching into these setbacks. So, you have the, the shape of the lot, which creates no side setbacks. You have the steepness of the lot, which, you know, if you're trying to, to work within, you know, recommendations of the, of the municipal code and the general plan as well, for trying to avoid unnecessary cut and fill and alteration to the, to the topography of the, the natural topography, as well as the vegetation on the slope, trying to build within the existing relatively level footprint is the least, it's, it's the least disruptive kind of path forward to add additional square footage here. The proposal otherwise conforms to all standards of the R1A district as shown here, aside from the front setback encroachment. Lot coverage is met, height is met at 30 feet, where 30 feet's the maximum permitted. Floor area ratio is also met. The lot size is, is 13,000 square feet. And as the, as the numbers show, it meets all the, all the figures except for the front setback encroachment. Staff pleases because of the shape of the lot and the unique circumstances that all variance findings can be made. To go back to the, the first variance finding, which is the special circumstance applicable to the property, other than the shape and the topography of, of the lot, also as we saw in the, in the vicinity map, the fact that really the, the neighboring, the neighboring parcels being town-owned and being undeveloped kind of increases the, the practical setback of the structure from, from the street, from neighbors. Also, the fact that the property line is some distance from the actual street further increases the, the effective setback, minimizing any potential impact of, further minimizing any potential impact of, of encroachment. So, it is, it is a unique situation. Strict, strict application of the zoning ordinance would result in practical difficulty and unnecessary physical hardship, in part because it may, it may result in construction within the only remaining portion of the, of the level yard at the rear of the property. To have a, to have a backyard, a usable backyard, kind of an, an open outdoor space is, is a, is a privilege enjoyed by many, and denial of this variance could deprive, deprive the property owner of that, of that privilege. Ultimately, staff pleases, all design review and variance findings can be met and recommends approval of the project. Lastly, in terms of neighborhood outreach, the, the applicant did reach out very early on, prior to the prelim, and continued to, to reach out to neighbors to obtain more letters of support throughout this process. A number have been provided, they're, they're in your packets as well. Staff received no letters or calls of objection to the project. And if we go all the way back here, I've also shown the properties which provided support for the project, which are a majority of the properties within the vicinity. Really, the slope and the orientation of the homes here, and the setback, even, even with encroachment, really minimizes any potential view or shading or privacy impacts of, of neighbors. Privacy is a really minimal concern here because of the orientation of these homes. View impacts are very minimal. View impacts are very minimal because of the height of these homes above the subject property. And shading is very negligible as well, due to the distance from this property to other surrounding properties. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Doug. Well-prepared report there. Phyllis, do you have any questions for...
Not at this time.
All right. Dr. Bundy?
Uh, no.
Okay. Jennifer?
I just have two quick questions. Can you go back to the view that you just showed, where it had all the neighboring properties?
Eventually.
Yeah. So is this land is all owned by the town of Corder Madera?
Correct.
Okay. And this is just a dead end and will never, this will never be developed? Or...
I don't know if I can go that far. I know that it's not currently paved.
Okay.
But I think there may be potential there, I'm not sure. Can't speak to that.
Gotcha. And then if you go back to the view that shows the variance, I just have a question on the distance. Okay, that's fine. Is this distance right here approximately eight feet? I think I saw something on one of the plans. And the reason I ask is I was just trying to understand... Here, actually, I think you can even see it on A2.1, where it actually shows almost the corner. I think it's about eight feet, that's fine. And the reason that I ask is because I'm just sort of envisioning if that had been a side setback instead of a front setback, then you still would have been within the 10-foot difference between a 20-foot versus a 10-foot requirement, so...
So in this case, actually, because this is a street-side setback, that would be 20 feet, I believe it would still encroach into that setback, but to a lesser degree.
Okay. And then what is this distance approximately?
I believe that the distance of the building, of the proposed footprint of the building, to the actual curb is just under 50 feet.
That, okay. So this is probably about 20 feet as well, probably a little over 20 feet.
Yeah, I believe so.
Must be. You said this is 25 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's at least 25 feet. Okay, or around 25. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Nicolo, any questions for staff?
No, thank you. No questions.
All right. I have nothing to ask of staff at this point, so I would ask the applicant to make a presentation, please.
Good evening, planning commission... Can you hear me? Yes? Okay. Heidi Richardson with Richardson Architects. And I'm here this evening with Ann Del Balso, the owner of this great property, and Anna Condol, our lighting designer, and Amity Winters from Shades of Green, the landscape architects, as well as Andrew Priebus from our office. Doug has done such a great job and stolen all of my thunder, and given the late hour, I wasn't going to repeat things that he's already said. But I know you've been to the site and have seen, you know, the sort of general character enassing of the neighboring properties, which we're trying to show here. And we feel that our property, which is here, fits in with that particular character, although, of course, this is a more updated and modern design than the older homes in the neighborhood, which probably will start being remodeled. You'll probably start seeing a bunch of these come in within the next few years. I think Doug did a great job on explaining the variances and things. And we just did measure this. I think Commissioner Friedman had that question. I think it's 22 feet. So when we were last here, you were very enthusiastic about our proposal, but had this one concern about a potential for nighttime lantern effect in the neighborhood. So I wanted to review with you the changes we've made to address this concern. Firstly, the bedrooms on the top floor were set back 8' 7" from the front face of the, I think you saw the previous scheme in Doug's presentation. And this helps us, and we added a deck as well and a railing. So this really helps us, because we're up high anyway. Any passersby are down on Madrono. And as they look up, the glass and glazing is further blocked by the house, as well as the railing. So we thought that was a good start. And in addition, we reduced the glazing on this facade, the major facade, the south facade, by 100 square feet. In addition, we added a three-foot overhang in most of the areas of the window, major window area, which will help cast shadow on the glass and reduce any light that helps reduce the light emanating from the house. Of course, there probably will be window covering, but I realize, as a secondary measure, but I realize that you can't count on these always being closed. But they probably will be there, especially in the bedrooms up here. We have introduced landscape screening for lantern effect mitigation, which I will describe shortly. And finally, we've addressed the lighting, which Anna will present shortly. So to refresh your memory, these are the floor plans and the section. And this shows the setback and the railing here, and the overhangs over the glass. So landscape plan. We've added this oak tree, this oak tree, and two crepe myrtles. And what... We actually like the sort of native grass hillside that exists right now. And we're interested, and so we wanted to do sort of minimal interventions. And so the addition of these trees adds some privacy screening, as well as blocking the light. And these two elevations show you what... Here are the new trees, the two crepe myrtles and the two oak trees. And the coast oaks will grow up to 70 feet at maturity. But at the time of installation, the 36-, the 48-inch box trees will be about 10 feet tall. Growth rate for those is moderate. But the two deciduous crepe myrtles, and we chose deciduous because we still wanted views out and winter sun into the lower level. But they have a beautiful, graceful bark and branching structure, even after they've lost their leaves in the winter. And they stay relatively small. The height at maturity will be about 15 to 20 feet. And at the time of installation, they'll probably be 6 to 8 feet tall. Their growth rate is fast, with height increasing more than 24 inches per year. And that's about all I know about that. But Amity can answer more questions, if you need that. So Anna can now give her presentation. But before I turn the lectern over to her to describe the lighting, do you want to ask me any questions?
We will ask the commission members if they have anything they want to ask you right now. No.
No.
My only question about the landscaping that you've just described extensively is that on the driveway side, it appears to have been a remodel, and the grasses and so forth were installed. On this side of the house, it appears to have been the original landscaping that's kind of crawling across the hillside, the 1970s stuff that you're going to replace with grasses, essentially.
Yeah, is that... Yes, yes.
Okay. And yeah, it's very attractive over there, but it's like two different worlds between the driveway entry and this facade over here. Okay. Thank you. Love to hear from Anna.
Okay, great. Anna?
Thank you.
So let me just show you. This advances this level. That's the pointer.
Good evening. I'm actually very happy to hear the, this issue of light pollution is important to you all. I taught a class last Saturday to UC Berkeley Landscape Architecture students on this very subject of light pollution and the need for shielding light sources and minimizing glare in the landscape. It's actually a really critical, I think, critical need in our design development, which is why I wanted to teach it to landscape architects. So the direction... Let's see, am I going the right way? Other way? In general, exterior lights would be all shielded sources. The steplights are, you know, LED, as well as LED, of course. That's a classic downward-facing light. These, this kind of fixture can be mounted in soffits, all downward light sources. And sconces can be, again, oriented down. And the LED sources are, you know, really great for minimizing, as well, the energy consumption. That fixture is, I think this one's 8 watts, that one's about 3 1/2 watts. So, you know, it's a good direction that lighting is going these days. And again, on the interior, recessed lights are a good direction to go. On the preliminary scheme that I helped Richardson Architects develop, the lights are in primarily recessed lights and are aimed at walls. We never aim at windows, of course, and in general, want to minimize light sources that would reflect in the glass. So this is, you know, we actually would not have that fixture. I was trying to sort of find an image of recessed lights, which is what that is. But we would not actually have a white shade. In fact, that's why I have this it here. Years ago, I started doing this in projects where there was a lot of glass, for many reasons. Because one is if you have a glowing white light in front of glass, you see the reflection in the glass, as well as lose your views from the interior. And on this project, it makes even more sense, since we're concerned about people being able to look inside the building. And then these are just, you know, sort of classic steplights on the interior of the house that are all downward lighting. And then this is a proposed pendant, possibly for the dining table, that would also be shielded downlight. And then same thing, breakfast pendant. This is a black glass shade, which gives good downlight for the task of the island, I mean, of the table. And then these are island pendants. Again, those are also great LEDs. And, you know, LED lighting under the cabinets in the kitchen, so that there's good task light, but not any light, extra light than you need, and just the light where you need it. In general, that's another really good direction to take lighting, is put the light where you need it, and that's it. You know, not a lot of extra light everywhere. This is just some images of the upstairs, where potentially we might have a pendant in the stairwell that could be, again, a downlight. Uplighting in, possibly in the bedrooms, that would just bounce some light off the ceiling. And then reading light and bathroom lighting, that obviously wouldn't go through the windows. So those were, I think the lighting plan is in here, but I think that was the main direction of this, was to address the areas that were visible from the street.
Well, thank you. That's very succinct about the interior lights. So these look like a figure for track lighting, but in fact, they're not. That's just a line of number eights or whatever you've got in the ceiling.
Yeah, that's a, that's a... Yeah, it's an alignment line. It doesn't show up that dark on the plans. But yeah, those are recessed lights, and that's just an alignment line, showing that they're in line. So I don't know if you guys have...
Great. So it sounds like there was a lot of sensitivity to this idea of the interior providing, you know, potential lighting of the neighborhood, so to speak, and you've reduced that significantly. So I commend you for that effort. Do any of the other commissioners have any questions for Anna Condol?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Who will next?
So we're done. Unless you have questions. And Ian did do the neighborhood outreach, but I don't know if you have questions about that. He could answer those.
Just a couple, yes. So on this site plan, it looks like the Fort 12 in Madrono across the street didn't respond, nor eat. Pleasant Avenue above did not respond.
Okay, so I can answer about number eight. But I'm going to let, I'm going to let you do that, Ian.
Hi.
Hello.
So I shared...
Your name is...
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Ian Del Balso. I'm the homeowner at 11 Madrono.
Great, thank you.
Nice to see you all tonight. The 8 Pleasant Avenue is owned by Greta and Bruno Venne. Bruno unfortunately passed away in the last year, and Greta has since moved to a retirement community in San Rafael. Prior to her moving, I went up and spent some time with her and informed her of our plans and asked if she had any questions or concerns. This is before we did the study session with you, or objections. Wanted to hear any more about it as we got further down the line. And she said no. She was going to turn this into a rental property. That's what it is now. Haven't done any socializing, the plans with the people who are renting the property. They are there for, as I understand it, a year as they remodel a home in San Francisco. The other property in question, the one right in front of us on Madrono, is owned by Jim and Joan Kelly. And I have socialized the plans, both sets, the study session plans, and also the updated plans with them. And they did not share any questions or concerns with me. As to why they didn't write a letter, I'm not exactly sure. But, you know, I prepared a lot of these letters for folks and got some envelopes. Maybe theirs got lost in the mail, I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm sure of it, yeah. But as, on that street, as you look across the street, those are the two shingle-style homes that are almost identical.
Is that right?
Yeah. They have large Monterey cypress in front of them or something.
Correct.
Yeah, right.
You know, we enjoy great relations with all of our neighbors and more.
Right. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the homeowner here? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that said, we'll open it up for public comment. Phil, would you like to say something? So we're left with the applicant's body of staff here, all very highly qualified people. So with that said, we'll close the public comment section and take it back up here to the commission and see if there's any questions for staff or anybody else. After all of that, I don't, not anybody else, but for staff after hearing from the applicant. Any questions, Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
I had a question. Was gray water done on this proposal? Is there a gray water irrigation system associated with this?
At this point, I don't believe so. It's a condition of approval that if the applicant does go to MMWD as part of this process, prior to building permits, and shows that they have reached out to them and consulted regarding the new gray water requirements.
It seems like it's such an ideal location for gray water, you know, to be able to provide that, especially for the new irrigation that's going on, downhill slope. You know, and this is sort of more water use that's going into the building itself. So it would seem like we should be asking for that.
We have to go to the water district to see the usability.
So, the way the ordinance reads here is that if they're asking for an enlarged water service for a substantial residential, they, it requires applicants to install a gray water recycling system. So, the question will be, are they getting a new water meter? At which point, if they do, they will have to get, they will have to follow the gray water ordinance. So, that'll be something that the building department follows, right? Is this right?
Yeah, and that's something that we, that we look at when, when they submit for building permits. We, we review the plans and look over the conditions of approval and check these things to, to make sure that, that anything that should be reviewed before we sign off on building permits, you know, that we can check and...
Yeah, I would think we should look at it as, are there's, is there more water use that's gonna come about as a result of more bathrooms, you know, going into the building? And if that's the case, which it is, we should be really asking for that, especially in a location where it would really work easily and not be, you know, prohibitively expensive. The, the other question that I had, I should have asked earlier, was the, in relationship to the new plantings, to get the maximum growth out of what's going on, going in, it would seem like you have to do actual excavation to really put these plants in, because it seems like there's a lot of rock up there.
And question, is there a question or are you making a statement about that, Dr. Bundy?
I, I guess, asking a question is the arborist or the landscaper planning on excavation in order to assure that the new plantings are gonna survive and do well?
They would have to. I don't see a, a net off-haul assessment in this. We could open it back up to public hearing and have the landscape architect step before us and describe that. So, we can do that. Bob, would you like to hear about that plan for then?
Yes.
Okay. Let's reopen this and have the landscape architect please address this issue of excavation.
Hi, my name's Amity Winters. I'm with Shades of Green Landscape Architecture. As far as the trees that we're planting, they're, they're going in, the Colesley Oak is going in as a thirty-six, thirty-six inch box tree and the, the crepe myrtles are gonna be going in as, I believe, they're going in around six to eight feet tall. So, the amount of excavation needed to actually plant them is, is minimal and there's already oaks growing there on this hillside right now that are doing very well. It's their native habitat. So, I don't see that there's going to be a, a significant amount of, of excavation needed to, to plant these plants and make sure that they're happy.
Yeah, I think my concern in regard to excavation was is that you probably would need to do more excavation if it's, it's rock, as rocky as it appeared to be in order to provide enough soil so that they, you know, don't get stuck in that, you know, in the planter box...
Right, right.
From the standpoint of what you're excavating to put that in.
Yeah. No, I, and, and that's a valid concern. I think we'd have to look at exactly where that exact spot is going to be and see what the condition is right there and evaluate at that point.
So, you would overexcavate based on the soil conditions and create...
A softer...
Backfill of soil underneath for root expansion.
You have to do that with any, any planting anyway.
So, I'm gonna swing over here to the town and say, do we have any issues with that amount of excavation for landscaping?
No, I mean, I don't, I don't think we have...
Is a permitting...
As a permitting requirement, no. I mean, it's not that it's gonna be off-hauled or anything. I wouldn't imagine this would be. So, we don't look at it from that perspective, needing a permit. You know, we take, we have landscaping plans and we expect those to be complied with and that there's been some level of research that have gone, gone into making sure that what you're showing now today in front of the commission is, is able to be accomplished. And so, that's what the town will be expecting to see when we go for final COs on these things, so...
With that said, then, the landscaping plan becomes a part of the application and final occupancy is based on the landscaping plan being completed as shown. So, that's, that's the requirement that we...
I mean, we work with our applicants, I mean, too, obviously. If there are issues during the process, we can address them and discuss whether they need to, if they're significant enough where they would need to either be part of a revised application of some sort and come back before the commission.
So, when they need a backhoe with a hammer on the end of it up there, it won't be an issue. I'm just kidding. That's what's gonna happen, so...
Don't scare him, Peter.
All right. Any other questions for the landscape architect from...
No.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll, and close this back up to public and bring it back to the commission. So, Bob, anything else you wanna...
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Jennifer?
I don't have any questions.
And Nicole?
No questions.
Okay. So, it's, it's too good to be true. We have, you know, really no issues. I think that you guys heard the comments, addressed it. I hope you feel that you got a better design out of what came out of the commentary and the process that you went through to, to get to this hearing. It's a, it's a handsome house up there and we appreciate the effort that goes into it. So, with that said, we have, to get the commissioners to acknowledge the findings here for this specifically, and I'm going to ask each of you if you can agree with the findings for this variance. Phyllis?
Definitely. I mean, in the perfect world, we'd have a whole bunch of rectangles or square flat lots and these would make sense. But when you get into the reality, especially on the West Coast, it doesn't happen, it doesn't exist, and it would make no sense not to have this variance.
Okay. That's pretty clear. Dr. Bundy?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The, the design is absolutely gorgeous, I think. Very thorough. Really like it. And just for the record, the unique condition of the lot justifies, in my opinion, the necessity for the proposed variances, both. And due to the hardship that, well, was well explained by the planning department. And also for the record, just to, the intent of the setbacks, also we have to remember that typically are designed to provide parameters within typical circumstances and, and not meant to reduce possibilities. And in this case, I think that, you know, it qualifies fully.
All right. Thank you. I, I agree that the unusual shape of the lot really justifies the variances, not having a side setback and creating a, a design with a lot of effort that fits on the property with those variances is appropriate. So, I don't think that we have any reason to object to the variances. So, with that said, do I hear a, a motion for this?
If I may, real quickly, and one of the things we didn't put in this, well, usually when projects bump up against sort of the height limit, we will request a height certificate or an elevation certificate that it's not exceeding the maximum height. In this case, I think it's warranted based on the, that point.
Agreed.
So...
Forgot to add that, yeah.
So, we've, yeah, I just wanted to mention that. We forgot to add that in this particular case.
And even though it's late in the game here, I, I was gonna ask where that line went through the site, but being that there is a flat spot in front of the house right now, that, that line of thirty foot on the existing site is just kind of made moot by the new structure, because there's an existing huge flat area right there. So, it, it doesn't really matter where that line is taken. But it does matter that it doesn't go over that as long as we have a good starting point established by a survey at the time of initial construction.
And, and the applicant in the, in the sections, I believe, has provided adjusted height, you know, tried to follow the plane of the, of the lot. So, through each section, through each cut, that line has been changed. It's not a constant throughout the lot, so we've gone to that detail.
Well done. All right, good.
And we, generally will look at, at the time of construction, take, it's a little bit, we have to go off the, I mean, really, the way the height is measured is off the natural, but it's off a finish grade. But that said, I think we can work with the, at the time of framing and whatnot to get what that finish grade is to the floor, and then we have elevations and surveys that will tell us where they're measuring from.
Well, I think they have a, a grade, a benchmark off of the street and so forth.
Exactly.
There's an existing slab and all of that would work to establish a, a point on the lot that could be used to...
Yep.
Ensure that it's not exceeding its thirty-foot height limit. All right. Pick it up again. So, is there a motion for this with the condition of the survey?
How about the motion?
Height, just, height certificate or elevation certificate by, by, it can be done by different people, but not necessarily a survey.
Okay.
So, this is a design review PL dash two oh one six dash oh oh one and variance PL dash two oh one six dash oh oh one for a major remodel and third level addition to an existing two-story residence with very, with variance for front setback encroachment resulting in a four thousand, six hundred ninety-nine square foot, three-level structure with the addition of a elevation certificate of some type.
Second?
Commissioner McCaff?
Aye.
Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner Friedman?
Aye.
Commissioner Caldera?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your patience and it's a great project. Good luck. All right. You know what?
Your home is gorgeous and it may look even better.
We did not read appeal rights on the last one and we should read appeal rights on this. So...
Peter, while they're leaving, at our last meeting, Judith mentioned to me, and I'm gonna have Adam follow through on it, that she's gonna write up something that we use as a template when we pass these motions, something we should always say, no matter what the motion says, for legal reasons in the future. So, I ask Adam to please remind her.
Thank you. Please read the appeal rights.
Following action by the planning commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the town council within ten calendar days. Appeal forms available at the planning department, town hall, and a three hundred dollar filing fee is required.
Thank you. All right. You may. Yeah.
Yes.
The story polls, I'm sorry, I put something in the scene. It's ten calendar days from today or ten, right? The appeal period is, okay. So, we'll bring them down. So, what's that exact date? Today's, please have a second, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, Adam, you wanna talk about the holiday and meeting schedule?
Yes. We have a, sort of a more, more than usual, sort of an interesting calendar coming up and wanted to discuss possible changes to the calendar, or at least, yeah, have a discussion on, on what everyone's thinking. I don't know, hopefully you brought, have some sense of whether these meeting dates will work for you or not. But, starting with October, the next meeting, we're not proposing to change the next meeting on October eleventh, although, as I mentioned, it will be, it's, it's Yom Kippur, the eve of beforehand. Just so you know, we can sort of, the next agenda item, we were going to have at that meeting, a discussion of junior second unit ordinance, ordinances, rel, essentially start, that basically have the, sort of a more informal business item meeting where we have a discussion about what these junior second units ordinances are. If, if you want, we could sort of potentially have, maybe inquire about a presentation. We can also talk about the various other ordinances. We will have other, other jurisdictions, jurisdictions have adopted or are considering and that's sort of with the intent that the commission would be able to provide staff a direction in terms of bringing back in the following meeting in October, an actual ordinance for review and consideration in a formal public hearing. I think it's, I think it's reasonable to provide that additional public hearing or public meeting for the public to come discuss the ordinance or, or the, the issue, rather than go straight into a, a sort of consideration of a, of a new ordinance on that matter. We also have new state law that Phyllis is on top of, on top of everything, all the, all the Sacramento dealings, but I guess just today...
I'll mention it when we get the court.
Okay, absolutely. I'll let Phyllis do that. But all that, all of those things should be, maybe we can have a just general discussion about that. And I think Phil and Doug would be able to lead that conversation at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, that sort of outlines, then we enter into...
Could I stay in October because...
Absolutely. Let's stay in October.
In the past, when we have had some kind of a conflict because of a holiday or something, on a Tuesday, the, was it the second Tuesday?
Yes.
We have moved our commission meeting to the prior Thursday. In this case, it would be the sixth.
Right.
I mean, I certainly would like to have you be able to participate in the type of meeting you're talking about. And I know Judith said she can't be here on the eleventh and I don't know who else is Jewish who also cannot make it, but I wouldn't have a problem moving it to the sixth.
We would be up against noticing requirements on that one, wouldn't we?
No, 'cause I haven't noticed the town council meeting yet. We'd be two days after the next town council.
Yeah, you know, well, I, I would say, yes, it's, it's tight just for preparation purposes and we wanna get you, you know, a, a staff report that sort of frames the issues and frames the discussion a little bit. But, you know, I'm happy to move it. I, I frankly think it's going to be more of, in terms of participation from staff, more of the staff report setting the stage and the framework and really the commission sort of providing feedback and, and discussion. I don't necessarily think I, it's, it's, you know, I'm gonna be adding some, that much to that discussion. If you're, if you're at the town council meeting for the, the vacation rental discussion, it was much, it was really a discussion where we laid out, in the staff report, I think, enough information that the council could sort of, you know, and, and obviously we have Phil and Doug very...
Okay.
Capable of, of answering technical questions or questions about other jurisdictions.
If you don't mind not being here, I can live with it. I just didn't wanna do it without you, if you should be, felt you should be a part of...
I mean, we could also, I would, I, I guess, I would also say, I just hesitate with the sixth. You could all, we could also look for the, the thirteenth if it's, if the commission wants to.
It's not a holiday that goes on for several days.
I'd prefer to move it to the thirteenth.
That would be fine with me.
Or acknowledging.
Okay.
All right. So, we'll put this...
Could we do it on the thirteenth then?
We, we, we'll look for, so what we'll do, based on our discussion tonight, we will follow up and make sure we can confirm the rooms available and we have to do all that sort of thing.
Could you let me know as soon as possible because of my other work schedule?
I will, I will.
So, I don't have a night meeting. Do it on the thirteenth instead of the eleventh.
Does anybody, anybody else see any issues at this point with the thirteenth?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with the thirteenth.
Okay. Can we just plan on the thirteenth unless there's a problem?
I'll have to let you know.
Yes, but we'll, we'll, that will sort of, if it's okay with you, we will. And as discussed in the, in the brief report, you know, these would be, anything we move off the Tuesday will be a special, sort of called a special meeting, just because it's not a regular, on a regular scheduled day. It's really just a formality, though, to call it that. Okay. So, into November, this is a question for you all. You know, Election Day is our normal... day is our normal PC meeting would be on November eighth, so I, I doubt, I don't know, I mean, I doubt we're gonna be, uh, maybe we will, and we'll have sort of something running in the background over here, we'll have some live updates, but
Be fun.
Well, I have historical clients calling, thanks.
So, it's, it's up to, you know, maybe you guys can discuss how you feel about meeting that date. We, we, um, I think the seventh doesn't work, and Tracy had looked at the seventh 'cause the room is, it's already booked for, I think, a flood
You said the ninth.
We're looking at trying to move the flood board meetings to the second Monday of the month.
Okay.
So, it's, it's possible that, uh, it, we probably won't decide that until the October twelfth meeting that we have.
Okay.
We are meeting the second, uh, the second Monday this time because of a conflict in my schedule.
Okay.
And we're actually, I'm proposing that we move it to the second Monday.
Okay. You, I noticed you walked down the ninth here to move it to Wednesday.
I think Tracy had just saw that the availability of the room was open on the ninth, it wasn't on the seventh, but pending, it may be open on the seventh. We could try the tenth again, I don't know if we, how, how, uh, if we, if, if, if we looked at the tenth, actually, for the
Part of it is what you think you might have on it, but, um, the attendance would be very low for that night, election night.
Yeah, exactly.
And, um, you know, D-Day.
Yeah, so, so that's why we recommended, or, I don't know if we recommended, but we said you can move it ninth or tenth, I mean, what is the schedule?
Either one, either one could work.
Yeah, the seventh is not good for me, but ninth or tenth are both fine.
Is, is the ninth or tenth okay for you?
Yeah, ninth or tenth are both fine.
If I, for me, it would be best Thursday than the tenth. I have commitments every Wednesday and Mondays and Fridays, but
Okay.
Why don't we figure on the tenth then? I'll work for that, try to make sure.
First priority would be the tenth and then ninth if, as a fallback.
Okay.
And then we have the second meeting, we've, we've considered, um, obviously the twen- I think the twenty-second is difficult. In the past, we've all, when we've had a, a PC meeting on Thanksgiving week, we've moved it actually forward.
Yeah.
But in this case, um, we have a fifth Tuesday in November, which I think actually is, is a better solution to have it after the Thanksgiving break, rather than squeezing it in in the Thursday before, especially if we're moving the election day meeting later in that week, so
That's fine.
The twenty-ninth is what we're proposing on, on that, for that second meeting in November.
Everybody agree with that?
And I, and I think we're, you know, we'll
Sure.
We'll have to, I think we will, obviously, again, the agenda, we'll, we'll know more as the agenda comes out. It's possible we may have a, a cancellation, but I, we haven't had one in a long time, and I don't expect we will, um, given the number of projects that will be coming down. We're expecting to be, coming in November, December.
Really, huh?
Yeah.
Let me just also mention, uh, November eleventh, Veterans Day, uh, the Corredore Town Council and the Lions Club hold a volunteer appreciation dinner for everybody that is on a board or commission.
Oh, is that when it is?
Hmm?
Is that the date this year?
Yeah.
'Cause that's a wonderful time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, everybody's invited here.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna miss it this year.
It's a real nice party.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I'd like to attend.
Yeah, you'll, you'll get an email invitation.
Fantastic.
All right.
Um, and then
That's one of the events.
December, you can see, we have the regular meeting on December thirteenth, and, um, you know, the question, this was actually a question, it, it, to me, we, we put something on the twenty-second if we absolutely need to have one, I think that's also likely a low attendance meeting, and, and just the way the calendar lines up in December, I think it's gonna be challenging to get two meetings in December.
Yeah.
We may wanna just, at this point, unless something sort of comes up that we just need to get to, just tentatively cancel a second meeting in December because of the way the calendar works out.
Yeah. I may, I may be gone on the twenty-second, I'm not sure.
It's just very close to the, you know, it's, so
I would like to be gone.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to be back east with my family, but it's not gonna happen.
Okay, so, that's, um, that's good, I, I don't, you guys know what the upcoming workload is and, and how, um, significant some of these things are.
Yeah, and I might as well, I mean, as part of this discussion on calendar, I guess I can get a little bit into, um, just upcoming projects. You will be seeing likely a lot of notices regarding environmental reviews of whether, um, mitigated negative declarations and so on and so forth for a variety of different projects, likely being, um, uh, distributed in October or November, so those usually come with a thirty-day review period, at which the end of that period is when we try to schedule the planning commission public hearings. Um, we have Marne Country Day, we have Marin Montessori, we have a, um, we have a, um, Marsh Restoration Project, um, out on Seventy-two Industrial Way. We will be talking about, um, shortly, um, uh, recirculating of Corredore Inn, and when that has to come back, um, we have another, Restoration Hardware, we're likely, we're gonna try to get a, but that's not, I, I wanna clarify Restoration Hardware, that would be sort of more of a, it's not a commission meeting, it's more of a notice of preparation of an EIR, so it's a little bit different, and, but the other one is Two Hundred Nellin, um, likely as well, so
What about, um, the Preserve?
No, yes, no
Are they coming back with anything?
They will, but they're, they're much further down the line. These are, the projects I just mentioned are much more, but for this review period of the environmental documents, they're ready to sort of be heard at a public hearing.
Marne Country Day is the one we heard in a special meeting
You had that, yeah.
a while ago. Okay.
The Marshes
To fix the projects, but, but that's just sort of a heads up on this, the
A Marsh Restoration is Audubon?
Yes.
And, um, is there a doc in our future?
And, well, and that, uh, likely, yes, that will be squeezed in there amongst the other, the projects.
Okay, good to know.
Squeezed.
Exciting times.
Exciting times.
Okay, so, that really resolves the, the planning of our calendar, I think.
Yep.
Does everybody feel resolved about that for the moment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, all right, so then, um, somewhere in this pile of paper, I had, oh, the whole agenda from the council
Oh, I've got it.
meeting right here, but, um
You want me to get started?
Um, go ahead, yeah.
Yes. Okay, at the council meeting last week, um, very nice, uh, presentation was made to former commissioners Dan McAtton and Tom Hughes, who came with their families, and they were presented with, uh, citation and a special thank you for their service, and I was watching Tom's daughters, and they just were grinning from ear to ear.
I understood they were
Those two girls just, it was amazing, and I'm so glad that Sloan thought to do it. Adam reported on the status of Tamal Vista, and that the recommendation would be for the council on ten-four, and there was a public hearing for the council to change its election date to even-numbered years to follow the new state laws, and what they're going to do is for the November seventeen election and November nineteenth election, which are the current dates, those will be four-and-a-half-year terms. So, starting in twenty-two, those, they'll come up in June, and from then on, it will be even-numbered years in June. The state is rather upset about the cost of elections when so few people show up on the odd-numbered years.
Mm.
And, um, then, the favorite subject of the evening came up, the encroachment discussion that goes back to, look at me close, smile, Two Forty-One Willow. This, what one of the people who spoke that night in front of us prophesied came true, somebody bought the house at Two Twenty-One Willow, and he now wants a fence at fifteen feet off of his property. There was a lot of discussion, no action was taken. The council realizes a big look has to be taken at encroachments in general, and, um, what should be looked for, et cetera, and they also have to look at the agreements because the current agreements as written do not protect the town and do not fulfill the requirements that are needed, and they were not done by the current attorneys, by the way.
No.
And I think that takes care of it. If you don't have anything to add, I wanted to report on two bills that got signed by the governor today.
Well, I do wanna just add a couple of comments.
Okay, why don't you add yours, and then I'll
And one of them was that I, I did stand up and declare, I did make a statement in support of, uh, holding the line on, um, property lines
Mm-hmm.
and that the town should not give up that property, and that, uh, whether, whether it's on that street or any other street, and I just think that holding property lines to fences and so forth should be the practice of whenever, if it comes for us, it's declared, you know, where is a fence, where is a property line, and we don't give it up, and, in a sense, there is a distinction between a fence along a streetfront and these particular encroachments
Yes.
because they are enjoying the use of that property, whereas if, uh, it's on a streetfront, you know, I have a fence on my property line in front of the street, the street property that the town owns is eye landscape, but I don't enjoy the use of that property, it's simply good landscaping, so there's a huge difference, and, um, I don't think that anybody should benefit from it without paying for it.
Yes.
If that's the case. So, I, I mentioned that to Mr. Riddle, who I said, who did not know if anybody had been paying taxes on any of these parcels or any other thing, 'cause I said what is possible is a revocable right to trespass, and if he issues that on these properties, then the town can remove, tell them to remove those fences, but he, apparently the research has to be done, whether or not any of those properties have ever paid taxes or laid any claim to it, but if no action has been taken, I know this for a fact that
Yes.
he can file that, and then the town can take away those, that property at any time, and that those property owners will have no rights to claim that property.
It's under state law, and what does protect us as a town is under state law that, uh, a public entity such as the town cannot give away public property, and there is a sixty-day revocation clause, and if the permit, quote-unquote, is revoked, it is up to the property owner who, to put, remove all the improvements and put the property back the way it was, and Peter mentioned, you know, the idea that there are two types of encroachments, one would be what is called a semi-public, which is in the front of the house, if, oh, to cut out an area for a parking space that others could use, and the other is what we see. There is one thing, and I did call Sloan afterwards, uh, it was stated by somebody, and I don't remember who, that, well, nobody has any idea of where the property lines are, they've never done a proper survey. That is not correct. Before the county gave the land over to the city, they quitclaim this land, it was the railroad right-of-way, by the way we're speaking of, since you weren't at that first meeting.
Yeah.
The county went out and put up markers along the whole way, just kind of those wooden stakes, and the markers, similar to what you see railroads do, and as a matter of fact, Mr. Hague, the one at Two Forty-One, there was a picture of the marker on his property before he cut it down, to say there was no marker. Uh, this has been going on for quite a while, and shouldn't, no charges, no cost ever to the property owner, the town has even paid to record the quitclaim payment.
My God.
Uh, the insurance requirements weren't even for property insurance, and they said it was supposed to be a million dollars, and most of the people under their homeowner's policies, their CPL, comprehensive personal liabilities, only three hundred thousand. They were supposed to hand in a certificate each year to show, nobody has, they're, the town holds harmless, doesn't really hold up in court, the town should be, it is an additional insured under the policy with showing the, uh, property limits of this landscape, it hasn't been done, so, it's kind of like the wall that was built that nobody checked up on afterwards, that you can't find records for. There's a lot of things that should be fixed up before it goes any further. Sloan wants to really look into it, though he does feel sorry for the man at Two Twenty-One because everybody else on either side of him has a fence and this guy doesn't.
Yeah, so, um, what I didn't get clear on, since I have a copy of the survey that was done by BKF, and Dave didn't seem to acknowledge it, the council didn't seem to acknowledge it
'Cause they didn't know.
But do you know if they have, because certainly I have the copy of it that was recently completed by BKF, and it shows all the property lines, and who's, if, if I have it, certainly the town ought to have it, and it's a
And also, the county, the town may have been, I'll say, relaxed about handling these things.
Well
The county is not.
No.
And since the county was doing a resolution for the quitclaim and some of that, I can assure you, they checked out what they were giving up.
So
So, it's there, I, but I also think something else, and I, Peter, I'm sure you agree with me from our discussions, this probably should be something that's just done at the staff level. I would like to see the planning, you know, commission involved, but certainly I think the council should be. I mean, there are certain ones that are routine, maybe a cutout in a driveway or something like that, but when you're doing something like what's happening on Willow, it shouldn't be at staff level, in my opinion.
Well, it's not supposed to be, right? I mean, if it's a variance for an encroachment, you guys can do it, but it's supposed to
No, no
He doesn't do it, it is even his department.
This isn't our depart- yeah, I know, I mean, it's, it's public property, so if there's encroachments onto public property, that's where Public Works gets involved.
And I think we heard the council members say, why isn't the commission dealing with this stuff?
I think that first, the first meeting, they said that, and I, yeah, and it's, um, again, I, you know, it's, maybe it's something the town manager now takes up and
Okay, all right.
can make decisions on that, but, but typically, it's a, it's the domain of the Public Works Department.
And Jennifer, I will send you the emails I received at the time, which have wonderful photographs attached, and you can get an idea of how blatant this is.
Where is it?
It's Willow.
I don't know.
It comes from Menke Park.
Okay.
It's, uh, near the Alto Tunnel where they would like to open up to have the bike right-of-way, is that the right name?
You walk past the pumpkin patch and the, the corn stocks
You'll see from the photos, it's pretty obvious.
Okay.
And there's some pretty upset neighbors.
Okay.
Uh, should I give the other one just really fast? The governor is going very slowly, but he's gotta be done by the thirtieth, as far as signing off of bills, and he finally signed off on two having to do with housing and today. Uh, we no longer call them secondary units, they're called, oh, God, I can't remember now, accessory dwelling units, yeah, let's make it complicated. AB twenty-two ninety-nine, both of them do essentially the same thing, one's a Senate bill and one's an assembly bill, and it really says that you cannot demand an additional parking place to have a granny unit, and also, if there is, if you paid a fee for the water meters and those utility hook up, the property owner does not have to pay an additional fee for hooking up the dwelling. The dwelling could be attached to the main house or in the yard, doesn't have to necessarily be attached, and there are all sorts of rules and regulations, it's not the biggest bill of all, which, the one that you and I were discussing all along? of all, which, the one that you and I were discussing all along, 2604 or something, this is just one of, these were two smaller bills, and, let's see, it makes it easier to build them, it reduces the cost in the sense of not having to have all of those fees for hookups, it also sets a faster timeline in which to do the approvals, and, it was, I think, was 2652, but they really, see, I read that thing at the council meeting that time, about all the things they're doing, but that's essentially, it's coming slowly, it will fit into what's going to be done, our presentation that we're going to hear, and I'll know the other bills, but little by little, it's coming down, and nothing too onerous now, because what the governor wanted, the legislature did not give him, which was removing all local controls on affordable housing, that, no way, and that's the one we had to worry about.
Yeah, that's off the table for now.
Until the next budget.
Yeah, okay, I wanted to ask staff about a couple items, Phil, when we approved the west-side landscaping of the village, I've been out there and noticed that there's failing issues out there, can you take that back to those guys, Peterson, and have them do an inspection, because there's failing irrigation, there's dead plants, the project has not been taken care of appropriately, and so it's starting to look sad, and we don't want it to fail.
Peter, where is that facing?
It faces 101 on the village.
The one that we had them redo three times?
Yeah, right. So I walked out there, and it's, it needs attention, there's, it's not being irrigated properly, they, they're just, I mean, there's stuff, they're just, they've just kissed it And with the lighting on that side, what time is that lighting supposed to shut off on the village, on the signs on the highway side? Is that not supposed to shut off at close of business, or is that 11?
11, I thought.
11:00?
That was 10 o'clock, but.
I thought it was 11.
Would you guys check on that? Yeah, I, I've seen it on late, and I'm not sure, I recall what the timeline was of that.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll double-check that.
And.
The sign, the signage in particular.
Yeah, the, you know, the Tesla sign, the, the white lighting signs that are out there, even they're shutting off, and just for the record, I'm, I'm hearing from various community members about the town center project going excruciatingly slowly, right, and that it's, obviously, they've lost tenants for that, and I don't know what their declaration of process is with the building department, but we approved all of that stuff, but they're not doing due diligence and completing the work, and here we are, we're going to get people coming to us and saying, why did you guys let this go on for so long, because it's really abysmally slow, I don't.
The only thing they really finished was the fountain.
So, they're not working on it with any effort to speak of, there are days go by when nobody's up on that scaffold or doing any work out there, it's really atrocious, and we're 30 days from rain.
Yes.
And they're nowhere near closing that thing up.
There may be some Sunday and Monday.
Right, so anyway, it's, I'm hearing from lots of people, and plus the tenants, and I can only imagine what we'll hear one day before us.
Just FYI, the property manager requested to work at night, and we gave him a cool to work tonight.
Oh, great.
I'm not sure if he started that, because he has permission to work at night.
And I, you know, I would direct any que, I mean, this goes directly to the property manager, I mean, he's their donors of the property, this is Monty.
Yeah.
And I would direct sort of questions on, on progress and whatnot to, to go to him first.
And I will, right, that's what, I'm relaying what I hear a lot of community members.
And you might want to mention where they took out those two trees near Safeway, and they were putting.
They put them back.
New trees, and, well, I know, I don't think they still had that area fenced off last time I was there.
Yeah, they're still going to do the paving around it and whatnot.
They have.
Because people complain where they used to sit on the edge and eat a sandwich or something, and now it's all fenced off.
They just completed the planter fencing, uh, planter planting, and they just started the new paving around it, so they're working toward those planters from the bike rack where that they were going to replace and have never replaced.
And, you know, parking has always been tough there, and half the spaces in the back are filled with their equipment, which doesn't help, I got that complaint.
So that's all I've got, but other than that, Adam, you just want to tell us how great it's going to go with the zoning change at the town council, right?
Yeah, no, I hope so, crossing my fingers, but that will, we'll, we'll be presenting that to the council on Tuesday, a week from today, and obviously, I'm going to be reporting on the Planning Commission's resolution and including that, and summarizing the comments we had at that meeting and the discussion we had, but we'll be, obviously, keep you informed of what happens there, it, if the, if the council chooses, they could introduce the zoning amendment at that meeting, there'd be a second reading of the ordinance at least two weeks later, and then a 30-day enactment period before it actually would become effective. I did want to also mention, we, mention we do, we are transitioning to a new building official, so at some point, I will have him come to a beginning of a meeting, you can say hello, and Brian Fenty is his name, and we're excited to have him, he was formerly at some private consulting firms, but prior to that, worked as the chief building official at El Cerrito for 10 years, and was a general contractor in his earlier life, so, he's got a lot of experience, and I think is a good communicator, and excited to have him work at the same time, where, you know, Mark's been great, and we're going to give him a send-off next week, this last week is next week.
Great.
So, that's happening and underway, and that's really all I got at this point.
Is there anything being done for Dave? I know he's not retiring, retiring, but he's leaving that management, the manager's position.
I don't know if there's sort of a broader party or something like that, we had a small little thing with him at the back room at Marin Joe's, but that's about it, so, I'm not sure if there's a big thing.
Yeah, this is just transition.
Yeah.
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 Jim Andrews is going to hold a party for him.
Yeah.
Okay, so, on to the minutes of August 23rd, does anybody have any changes to make to the minutes of August 23rd?
No.
Little one, my name is spelled wrong on the top, but it's.
Page three, below Commissioners, Chair Chase reported on August 16, Town Council meeting where Town Manager Bracken discussed items that included the reopening of negotiations with Macy's, I think that should be Nordstrom's on the gravel lot.
Isn't it Mesa Rich?
Mace Rich, okay, right, yeah, Mace Rich, I remember that from before.
Yeah, I had that highlighted, any other changes by anybody on this?
No.
Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Aye.
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 On the Planning Commission meeting minutes of September 13th, any changes to those notes?
No.
I had a question, page six, item four, definition of substantial remodel, was something left off, or was it just supposed to stop at 75%?
So the sentence read, 75%, semicolon, and, there's a blank space.
And then you go to five, revised language clarifying.
Yeah, and then it goes to five.
It's just the way it's outlined.
Oh, okay.
No, it's outlined correctly.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay, so, with that said, do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.